So we'll, uh, we'll start, uh...
Yeah, we'll start.
Alright.
She is not here, I don't believe, but we'll still recognize Elizabeth Mullers
Okay.
as our top scholar, daughter of Ted and Audrey. She has two brothers Jacob and Matthew and a sister Heather, all of whom have greatly influenced her growing up. Throughout high school, Elizabeth has been involved in a lot of things, including National Honor Society, Badger Grill State, FFA, Forensics, Mock Trial, Math Team, Key Club, World Cultures Club, Science Club, and Art Club, as well as choir, band, and musicals. She will be attending Marquette University of UW Madison and the extension in the fall, and she plans to have a career in criminal justice and/or scientific research. So she'd like to thank everybody in the Mineral Point School District and community for their continued support. She'd also like to congratulate our salutatorians. So with that, I'd like to recognize our valedictorian, Liz Mullers, and I don't believe she's here, but we recognize her and her accomplishments this evening, so. There are a lot of different activities going on tonight that might be pulling kids in many different directions, so I know not everybody was able to attend. But we do want to move forward with Skills USA participants that went to state. And Mr. Carey is here. Do you want to just share us a little bit about your competition at the state conference in Madison at the end of April and what's coming up?
Sure. For those who don't know too much about Skills USA, I think Skills USA fills a nice little niche and void that we have here in a small school. We get to compete in things from television video production to nursing to culinary to criminal justice, a lot of the things that small schools can't provide when students want to seek opportunities like that. We actually took 26 students up to state this year. They had a great time competing. For me, again, especially when I get to the underclassmen, they come all nervous saying, "Boy, I don't know if I can compete in, you know, criminal justice. I don't know how much background I have." And I tell them, you know, "If that's something serious that you're thinking about going into, I'm not worried about if they get first or 10th. I want to give them that experience and opportunity to do it, and as they progress through the next four years, they can improve on it." So this picture's a little light. I think we have, I don't know what was the last count, on members that we have, actual Emmensville president next year, too.
Fifty.
Fifty-something on membership, whatnot. So these are the ones that are able to make it tonight that aren't in the baseball or anything else, and I appreciate them. I tell them every, every year and every time they come and compete that they do an excellent job, and they're always excellent up there, too. We have a good group of kids in Skills USA.
So your state qualifiers up here, too many to list, but they are here to be recognized tonight, so congratulations on your state qualification. That's amazing. And the board would like to congratulate you personally and shake your hand, and we have a small gift for you as well.
(applause)
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Good job.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Next is Delta Kappa Gamma, and Ms. Bennett is here to share a little bit about her membership and their participants that have had a strong showing, so Ms. Bennett.
Delta Kappa Gamma has been part of an elementary enrichment program for years, and we're very fortunate, because I can't tell you what year that we haven't had somebody win at the local level. And this year, there were 160...
Six.
Six entries, and we have seven winners from just Mineral Point. I keep saying to the kids, "Even though we're a small town, we do great things. If you put your heart into it and you just do that extra work that it takes, great things can happen," and it's a great reflection of young people doing great things with their talents and making their point proud. And then we had Manana that went to the state level and won at the state level with her drawing. She loves to draw. She's an excellent artist. So very proud of these kids, and I appreciate the parent support. This is an outside-of-the-school activity, and everybody's going to do it when we do the presentation at school, because it sounds great. And then when you actually realize how much work it takes, it's hours and hours and hours of work on their own, so very proud of these young kids. Keep writing, keep drawing.
Well, if each, if each would stand, and I'll just kind of list off some of the accomplishments, because there are some neat things here. Rita won first place in illustrations. Will you please stand? Bryce won first place in illustrations as well. Brianna won first place in literary for her entry Sinister Journey Through the Snowstorm. Elizabeth won first place in literacy and illustrations for her entry New Dog. Claire won first place in literacy and illustrations for her entry Bella's New Glasses. Gavin won first place in literacy and illustrations for his entry An Adventure in the Wild. And Brianna Wesley's entry won at the state level as well. So congratulations to all of you on an amazing job. We're very proud of you.
(applause)
Congratulations. Come on down. What's up? Congratulations. 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 Congratulations, champion Liz. On the staff, congratulations. Very cool. Congratulations. Congratulations. It's a nice problem when you can't get all of the accomplishments on one page, so we'll scroll down in just a little bit, but under the leadership of Mr. Nevers. Share a little bit with us about our state solo and ensemble group.
This was two weeks ago on Saturday. We went to UW-Plattville and we competed for ratings against all ourselves. They fill out resumes and everything. And we had about 30-some students. Not all of them are in that picture. And of our ratings, David Kelm, singing a baritone solo, was nominated for an exemplary soloist award, and he didn't get the exemplary soloist award. He was nominated, which is a big thing for us. And our woodwind ensemble, we lost one point. Our saxophone ensemble received a perfect score, which has never happened with us before at state. And we had a duet with Caleb Mitchell and Kaylee Sparks. They're floating around here somewhere. There they are. And they had, they did a bassoon and tenor sax solo, or duet, which is very, very unique, and they also received a perfect score. And then our soloists got all firsts, and our percussion ensemble got a second, and our something else. John Bautrio got a second. So it was a good day for us.
It was an amazing day. Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause)
Thank you.
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 Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
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 So this is fun.
Oh, yeah.
You have to go down that.
Yep. And welcome to our 2016 state forensics qualifiers. Some of our leadership is out tonight, but Joel Doy is part of the forensics coaching staff. Joel, would you share a little bit about the accomplishments of your forensics team?
Sure. I guess I'll kind of start with the beginning of the season. So we really hit it hard after Christmas break, is when we really get started. And then our first competition was like mid-February, late February at, most people went to Mount Horro, but we did have some people go. That's a crazy thing, with crazy schedules, some of us go to some meets and some go to others, but you all need to qualify. So at the sub-district meet, you need a 16 out of a 25 to move on, and you have to get that in two or three rounds. Then you go to the district competition, and that is mainly held at UW-Plattville, and that's around spring break. And from there, to qualify for state, you need a 20 out of 25 or above in two out of three rounds. And then you go to state, and you do it once for one judge. So it's one person's opinion, you get one shot, and that's it for all the glory that you've been working on. So as you can see, we had a lot of gold medalists up there, a whole lot, and that says a great deal, because the judges are instructed to be very critical. You're not just supposed to hand out a gold, you know, as a participation award, you have to really, really earn it. So those are all of them. How many, is this a repeat goal for? Raise your hand, anybody? Yeah, we got a few. So that says a lot. And then we have about an equal amount that received silver, and we had one bronze. So just to medal at state is an accomplishment, just to get there. Very proud of these kids. There's a wide range of choices, and they always say that public speaking is like the number-one fear of Americans, so I tell the kids, you know, this is a great life-long skill that you're developing, and they can choose from acting, they can write their own speech. There's really something for everybody, so they did an outstanding job.
Well done.
(applause)
Thank you.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Well, it's six-thirty. Should we start? Or? Call me if you want to.
Basting.
Here.
Bush.
Here.
Dolphin.
Here.
Hay.
Here.
Kinch.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Stepis.
Here.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Election of officers, nominations are accepted for officers. We do start in order for board policy, from president to vice president to clerk to treasurer. There was only one nomination that was accepted, Member Hay nominated Member Steppes for president. Member Steppes accepted that. You could also take other nominations from the floor if not within the course of receipt.
I make a motion to close the nominations. If we're president.
Unanimous consent?
I'll stop now.
Call-in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Thank you. Nomination for vice president.
I'll nominate.
Will we close nominations?
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
I second the...
Any discussion? Harry, not all, there is a aye.
Aye.
Nomination for treasurer.
Clerk before treasurer. Just a point where I know it's going to be put there.
Okay. Clerk.
Who's the clerk?
No, he wasn't elected.
Larry Dolphin.
I'll make a motion for Larry again.
I'll second.
You got a second, Lisa? Any discussion? Any other nominations?
Are we going to pay mileage for him, or am I going to beg him for it?
Call-in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. And treasurer. Treasurer, nominations for treasurer.
Is it currently current?
It is, yes.
I'll nominate current.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Have you had a motion and a second? Any discussion? Call-in favor, say aye. Motion carried. Secretary?
The board appoints a secretary each year. The secretary is in the play of the district and will not be a member of the board. Typically, that appointment has defaulted to the superintendent's assistant. Not so much a nomination as it is an appointment.
Motion to make Angie the secretary. Sorry, I motioned by Larry, second to Julie. Any other discussion? Call-in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
CISO three delegate.
Establishment of board meeting dates and times. There is an editorial revision here. Establishment, the board will establish the meeting dates and times for future regularly board-scheduled meetings. Currently, the board meets the second Monday of the month at 6:30 p.m. We get started Saturday, though we moved that to 6:30. So current practice is 6:30. The board can choose to hold that or make a change to that if they so choose.
I'll let it at 6:30.
A motion to that. I'll make the motion, too. I'll leave it at 6:30.
Motion to Jeff. You have a second.
Awesome.
Second to Lisa. Call-in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
Okay. Board member salaries. Yeah, board policy 164 states each board member will be paid for each regular adjourned and special meeting to the board that he or she attends, and for the committee meeting that he or she attends. The per-meeting amount shall be determined by the board annually. Last year, the board voted to award a $50 monthly meeting stipend. In previously three years, the board did not take payment for meetings. Prior to that, the salary was $35 for board meetings and $25 for committee meetings. Just a side note, as Joel was looking at unified school districts, the board can act on an annual salary or a per-meeting salary, but by state statutes cannot do a monthly salary. So if we make a motion, it should be either annually or per-meeting.
Just to clarify, this is the second year that we've been paid.
Is this the second year?
Yeah. I mean, I guess.
Yes. So we'll make that shift to two years running you've been paid.
Yes.
Thank you.
What's the board's wish?
Oh, I think we ought to get $75 a meeting. Got $35. I got my check for two years, and you didn't pay how much you raised my taxes last year. I got a $800-$900 cut.
So you're saying $75 per meeting or per month?
Per meeting.
Per meeting.
Can't do it. That's a ordeal.
You said you couldn't do that per month.
I meant that committee is just the annual or per meeting.
Yeah, they could be a little bit less.
Or you can do per meeting.
You can do per meeting.
You can do per meeting.
Tax is per day.
You can do per month.
I don't know about anybody else, but I get kind of tired of doing this for $2 an hour. I mean, if I didn't pay any taxes, I probably wouldn't mind. And I did do this for monetary gratification or for personal or anything else, but did it because I was asked, but I don't think I should be insulted by what I get when I sometimes spend 10 or 15 hours going through researching things.
And just so we understand, I mean, if it's $75 per member times 7 times 12, that's $6,300.
That's from year on to back.
But that would cost the school district $6,000, $6,300.
Well, if you'd all vote the same as I did, if you'd want to have that $400,000 increase in taxes.
What's the motion right now, Ray?
Currently, we're getting $50 a month, so.
No. You got a motion, no, is that inside a meeting?
Oh, it's a question. I didn't make a motion.
I'm doing the motion.
Alright.
Any other ideas? That'd be something for committee meetings, too, though. But on the way it is, is it only committee meeting members or people that show up?
Currently, I believe it's any board member that shows up, the way it was last year, if we have per meeting.
If we're considering committee meeting payments, maybe we should move to committee discussion first.
To Dr. M.
Instead of having a long discussion about committee meeting payment and then deciding that we're not having.
I don't, we don't really have very many committee meetings most of the time. I'll make a motion that we do the $75 meeting for just the regular one and nothing for the committee meetings.
So $70, $75 per month is your motion?
Per meeting.
Per meeting. There's three meetings that month, it's...
Because we can't do it per month.
Okay.
So it's per meeting.
Per meeting. Regular, regular board meetings.
Just to clarify.
What about the ones we throw in during the month? Sometimes it takes as much work as the rest.
Well, I'm going to retake this.
I think a committee meeting could do something.
Yeah, I think there used to be 25 when I was on the floor.
There were 13 committee meeting last year.
Well, I can amend my motion to do the 75 for the regular board meeting and 25 for committee meetings.
So that's...
What, what happens to a meeting like the 23rd? What is that considered?
That's a board meeting.
So that's not considered?
So that's not considered?
They had to be.
So that's not considered?
They had to be.
So that's not considered?
They had to be.
The meeting?
My 13 included committee and special meetings, outside the monthly 12.
The 23rd is a special board meeting, or not?
Correct. And that was, that was Andy's question, is whether it's considered a regular meeting or a special meeting or a committee meeting, or they're all the same. I think, you know, we want to define that, because it's not necessarily a regular, so forth. You can see it going in one bucket or the other, I think, just to clarify that.
I would just like to say, I mean, no one's going to get rich being on the school board, and I don't see us getting well compensated for our time on this. I mean, the amount of time we're putting into being on this, and we're going to make way below minimum wage. So I personally am in favor of us not getting paid. That's how I'm going to vote, no matter what mine you come up with.
Well, in that case, you could donate it to the foundation you set up, and we have a tax deduction. So if you make it more, you can donate more, have a larger deduction. But Larry, he makes a lot of trips in here. He said he doesn't get any mileage. We always got mileage before. Barb Hanson kept track of all the meetings, and automatically got paid your mileage. I see people turning in bills for two or three bucks, so.
That's a minimal, Lisa, yes. So we got a motion on the floor, $75 per, per meeting, one meeting per month.
No, meeting's a meeting. If there's three meetings, it's...
It was a meeting.
It's meetings.
No, it's a regular board meeting.
Regular board meeting.
It's a regular board. There is a regular board meeting.
Well, last year, we were fancy to always have one meeting per month.
But sometimes we add two or three.
Let's, let's just change my motion to make even $1,000, because it's 900 if you do $75 a month for 12 regular meetings, so that'd be 900. Let's just make it even $1,000.
$1,000 per board member, per year.
Per year.
That's simple. Any other motions, or do you have to do a second to Jeff's motion? Do we have a second to Jeff's motion?
I'll second.
Second to mine. Any other discussion? Do a roll call, Angie.
Basting.
Yes.
Bush.
No.
Dolphin.
No.
Hay.
No.
Kinch.
Yes.
Stevenson.
No.
Stepis.
No.
Motion fails.
Any other motions for board member salaries? Glenn said it's 75 originally and 25 a committee meeting, but what do we differentiate of? Well, I think they're identified as such. If we have a special board meeting... That should be a regular meeting. Right. That's what I think, too. It should be regular. If you need a forum to vote on something, that's a board meeting. You want more motion there? How do you word it? And you're thinking, along with Glenn, $75 per meeting, full board meeting, $25 per committee meeting.
I would just like to say, if we start getting paid per meeting, and every time we notice that we're having a meeting, people are going to think that we're having extra meetings to get paid more. So I think if you're going to get paid, I think the annual payment makes more sense than a per-meeting payment, just money.
We also don't have minutes at the committee meeting, correct? Or do we take that and it notes attendance?
Yep.
I just don't want anybody feeling upset because they got shorted.
Was it 13 meetings last year, in the year?
13 outside the regular meeting, so it was either a committee meeting or a special meeting.
So a motion by Larry, $75 per full board meeting, $25 per committee meeting. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second to Glenn. Any other discussion?
I was just, I'll just, for the sake of discussion, I'd like Lisa's thoughts about the annual, but I also voted no, because I feel a little bit uncomfortable giving us, giving ourselves raises, when we have so much back and forth about what we're paying teachers and administration. So that's my hesitation on giving us any kind of increase, let alone 100% increase, which is what that is.
Well, I don't know. I donate about $15,000 or $16,000 in taxes to the school every year, so I don't feel a bit bashful about it myself.
And it's got...
And school taxes, not total taxes.
Did we, um, did we determine if there's going to be numerous committee meetings called if we put purchasing policy into play? Because if that creates nine or ten extra meetings to approve...
I, I personally don't think that the purchasing policy is going to result in, or needs to result in extra meetings.
Okay. I'm just concerned if we have an expense come up that can't wait two weeks to be approved, that now we're spending a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
It really shouldn't be that situation. People's been doing this long enough that I don't think there's going to be very often you're going to call us and say, we need a special meeting because I forgot to get this pre-approved.
Any way, Andy's referencing is there's a proposed policy that would...
I understand that, but you, you proved that, but I don't think that will be an issue.
Maybe it would reduce the amount of, uh, extra meetings.
Angie, go ahead.
Okay, so the motion is seventy-five dollars per regular board meeting and a special board meeting. Any special board meetings and twenty-five for a committee meeting.
Correct.
Can I, can I make one clarification or question? So it's anyone that comes to the committee meeting, whether they're on that committee or not. Usually we have it open so that people from the entire board can come. So I could show up at every committee meeting that's out there. Or is it, I, just for clarification, every time you come to a committee meeting, it's twenty-five dollars?
Are you going to continue that, or are you going to change it? My idea is to consolidate the committees we have into two standing committees and, and having a program like we had last year. Having a, a chairperson for each committee, a co-chair, and then the entire board part of all committees.
So that, that could turn committee meetings into board meetings by definition. It's one of those meetings where all seven are invited and then you have a quorum, then you've got a board meeting, and then you get paid seventy-five dollars under this motion.
It would have to be identified before the agenda as a committee or as a special board meeting.
So back to Andy's point earlier, should we discuss and decide on committees and what that looks like before we decide on this?
I don't have a problem with moving things along.
Seems like it makes sense.
Okay.
I have no problem with it.
All right.
So the motion has been delayed. Okay.
For one agenda, appointment of standing committees. Currently there are four committees, operations, policy, personnel, and finance. My recommendation to the board is to, to consolidate operations and finance together and policy and personnel together. Once again, we have a coach, uh, chairperson and co-chairperson for each, each committee. And then the entire board would be an active voting member of both committees if they are present.
I thought the reason for committees was so you had less people, so you had, a little easier to make a decision and then bring it to the board and for the vote rather than have a full board there. Then you, then you're basically not having committee meetings anymore.
Just to streamline the process, I guess, Glenn, I know we are cutting back on the, on the committee meetings, as has been said before. The ones that we do have, I, I feel are important enough to, um, we really want to get more work done at one particular committee meeting. And finance and operations certainly are similar in nature as...
Oh, I understand, combining it with what you have, the whole board there, and it's no longer a committee meeting.
We don't have to come.
Oh, do you?
No, no, not at all.
All right, I thought that was smart of it there.
No, no.
I like the idea. By the way, we have too many committees and hopefully less meetings because you can do more with operation and finance at the same time and personnel and policy maybe at the same time.
I like the concept of it, but if the entire board is part, they would be, I mean, who's on the committee? What is the committee? Is it just whoever shows up to the meeting? Because if it's not a subset of the board, then it's not a committee, it's the board. That's my only issue with it. I think the consolidation idea is good. I love that.
And this is how we did it this year.
It is.
We had, we had just, uh, we had the chair and we had the co-chair and then everybody was, they could either come or not come.
Because at the end of the day, all decisions made at a committee level come back to the board anyhow.
And hopefully it might alleviate some of the, having to hash it all over a second time if more of us show up for the grading. And hash out, hopefully done.
That's, that, that's my recommendation to the board for, uh, for committees. Any other recommendations I can open?
So in terms of cadence of the meetings, we would be having one every month for these particular, or just as we need them?
This last year, we had them as we needed them, thirteen in all, I guess. We, I'd like to go with that, that program again. I think this decade we don't need them. If we need two a month, we make two for one certain month. If we can go two months without one, then that's the way to do it. Do you make a motion? Yeah, I make a motion to...
I'll, I'll make a motion to join those operation, finance, personnel, and policy and the board president can appoint a chair and a co-chair.
Okay. Do we have a second to Jeff's motion?
I'll second him.
For clarification, I'm going to ask for nominations of our chair and co-chair.
How many members are you going to have?
Well, there we had a chair and a co-chair.
That's two.
Glenn and... They're, one would hope that they have at least three yet in the committee meetings. And whether, if there's two, and it's a split vote for a recommendation about to the board, then it comes back to the board as a split vote with two members. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. I'll ask for nominations for chairman of the policy and personnel commission.
Personnel and policy, I'll nominate Larry, or I'm sorry, Lisa for the chair and, um, Larry Dolphin for the co-chair. Or do you want to do them separate? It's up to you.
That's fine with me. If there's any other ideas, any other nominations? Lisa and Larry. Any other nomination? All right, do we have a second to Jeff's motion?
I'll second.
I've just one question, whether her or how you're going to be there. Something about you can't be there.
Typically whoever's the chair would be the one who's calling meetings, so you wouldn't call meetings, you know.
Right, no. It's all good.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. I should ask that any opposition? All right.
For operation and finance, I would like to nominate Glenn as chair and Julia as co-chair.
I'll second.
So we got, uh, for operations and finance, Glenn as the chair, Julia's co-chair. Any other nominations? All right, we have a second for that. We do. Andy, seconded. Any other discussion? Harry, none in favor, say aye.
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 Close. All right, motion carried. Thank you.
We're going to add another person to each of these now, so we got three, or?
No, I just give it to you when everybody's invited. We only have one meeting, I think. We gotta build any grounds with just you and I.
Mm-hmm.
Roger.
All right, going back to member salaries. We had a motion on the floor and a second. Read that again for Angie.
Seventy-five dollars per regular meeting, so that'd be the monthly meetings, and seventy-five dollar for a special meeting, twenty-five dollars for a committee meeting.
And for clarification, the entire board is a, a member of each committee.
Correct.
So any attendance would require payment.
Yes.
Well, the board is in, in each committee, the entire board, you go if you want, right?
Right.
And you want to have a full members, or do you have a...
Well, I'm just clarifying that it always is considered a member, so that if you attend, the district's required.
And there's no limit on the number of committee meetings, so, um, you could have, I mean, this could cost the district, I mean, if, if you had five committee meetings in a month, which is not unheard of, that would be two hundred dollars a member, that would cost the district sixteen thousand dollars, eight hundred, sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Goodbye, everybody.
Thirteen.
Three, ten, twelve committee meetings. Versus a special, I can grab it real quick.
Like, is this Scott Crowell, is the finance workshop a special meeting?
It's, it seems like we have special meetings almost one, one a month. I mean, looking back at the...
I'm wondering if it's like, if it's like nine to four, that's considerably more than two and ten.
Right.
You know, we're talking nearly, you know, a hundred dollars.
So we can, we can get, get...
These are...
I don't think we already had any special meetings on the board before.
Here's the past meetings, just in two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, especially.
If we went a full school year, we can go back to, um, so this would be sixteen. If we went to two thousand fifteen, you'd get a full year of two thousand fifteen. Let me know when you're ready to scroll up.
I don't know. How many people are going to go to a meeting to get twenty-five bucks? I mean, this isn't like one of our adjoining districts where they all got paid to go to these WS, WASB things and they all went to get the sixty or seventy bucks all the time because that's what they lived off of.
Is that all fifteen now?
This would be all of fifteen, yes, every meeting. Um, we, we, help me out, Miss Stoy, we started posting the committee meetings as well just to get some consistency. I don't know if we were doing that all the way through fifteen, but certainly we have, as of late, been doing all committee meetings and special meetings on board book. So as I look at, certainly I see special meetings and committee meetings, but it's not really until we get to about June, I see operations and personnel starting to dabble in. Certainly when we get to sixteen, you'll see it a little bit more regularly. So you might see, um, you know, three quarters of a year, or a quarter of a year, I'm sorry. You see a few more, you know, committee meetings here now listed. So I'm not sure fifteen was an actual snapshot of the number of committee meetings, but it gives you a sense or a rough idea. Thanks, Angie. Do you have some additional data that might be helpful for the board?
Just the dates and, uh, there was finance. We had the ELL meeting, which would have been, I'm not sure that was a committee meeting or a special meeting. The workshop. Majority of them are committee meetings. Of the thirteen.
And probably the majority are three, two to three people.
I agree with that.
Now, do the other people that attend, do they vote, or they just attend and listen and give their opinion?
At the committee meetings?
Yeah.
Every, every board member can vote, any board member that's present.
For the most part, we haven't voted.
No.
We just bring and listen.
Well, you did vote on a recommendation and bring the board. You don't vote on that.
All right, we'll ask, uh, we'll ask for the vote, Angie.
Okay, so we're voting on seventy-five dollars per regular and special meeting and twenty-five dollars per committee meeting. Uh, Larry, Dolphin.
Yes.
Hay.
No.
Kench.
Yes.
Stevenson.
No.
Basting.
No.
Bush.
No.
Stethus.
No.
I move that we don't get paid for any meetings.
Motion by Lisa.
I'll second.
Yeah, seconded by Andy. Any other discussion down there?
I've always opposed, I've always opposed that because I feel like when you put a zero value on something, it is hard for people that maybe are interested to see something. So, um, I don't support it. I also don't support us giving ourselves a raise, so I do think it should be some sort of reimbursement.
I'm Julie.
I would support going back to the fifty dollars per, per meeting or six hundred dollars per year.
I have a second, though. Six hundred dollars.
Yeah, I have my western motion.
We have a motion on the floor from no payment and a second.
Oh, sorry.
Motion by...
Lisa.
Seconded by Andy.
Yeah, for no payment.
For no payment. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What's money you're going to have?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Before.
There's no money, there is...
We did it the last two times.
No money vote.
Roll call for no money. All right, roll call, Angie.
Hay.
No.
I mean, yeah, wait, yes.
Yes.
Kench.
No.
Stevenson.
No.
Basting.
No.
Bush.
Yes.
Dolphin.
No.
Stethus.
No.
Okay.
So I will move to maintain what we are earning currently for a fifty-dollar a month meeting as a stipend, but annually instead of, worded monthly, so it's six hundred dollars annually.
Do we have a second?
And if you miss a meeting, then do you...
It's annually.
Commitment this year.
So you have a motion and second?
Because I missed one last year, so I have to touch it.
Any other, any other discussion? Roll call, Angie.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Basting.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Dolphin.
No.
Hay.
No.
Kench.
No.
Stethus.
Yes. All right, appointment of CISA three delegate? Who hasn't been in the past, though? It's been Julie in the past. Any other recommendations?
Do you want to do it? Um, if anyone else is interested to go and learn, I would be happy to give someone a shot, but I can do it. Do you want to do it?
When?
It requires only a full of meetings a year, um, and it doesn't even require them, but a year and a good 12 meetings a year. The entire board is. I don't know. I think there's, like, there's one coming up in the, toward the end of the year for school board members, and I feel like there's another one in the fall, but I, yes.
Okay, then I will, I will say no in case I have it.
I'll do it anyway.
All right.
And I will somebody else.
Do you have a motion to make, Julie? CISA?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, close, motion carried, thank you. Appointment of WASB delegate. And it has been in the past...
Julie.
I should, Julie with both.
This is at the school board convention?
This is in January.
In January.
This is an unknown bill for me.
It's a new bill?
Yeah.
I'm likely to go to the convention again this year, so I can do it again. Are you pulling it? Yeah, okay, so one of us will do it.
Co-delies?
And Andy says he can. You going to the school board convention this year?
You never know. I don't, I don't know. The way it's going, they did the tour, they did the tour, not by mid-December, January. Anyhow. Co-delies, is that okay?
No, I've just put one of us and we will decide when we're there, who's going.
With Julie down.
All right, Julie as a WASB delegate.
I'll second.
I'll put a camera.
So Lisa down as the first, and Lisa nominated, okay, then Jeff, okay?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Approval of, uh, that's not it for organizational business.
It might be a time to pause. We do have some guests that are here for information and discussion and, or actions, and I don't know if we want to reorganize the agenda and allow them to carry on through the evening, or we could press through some of this, whichever year the board chooses.
So our guests are for ELL report.
And mathematics. I think there's a guest about to speak and a teacher that's here.
Okay, all right. So is it okay with the board to go to the ELL report?
Board, do you want to take citizens' comments, or?
Yes, but... Did she step out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So maybe it's best...
Let's, let's, yeah.
Carry on.
Okay. All right, let's approve the minutes. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jeff, we have a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Julie. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Any board communications received?
Um, I had somebody make a suggestion and I'm wondering if it's something we should, um, look into. Um, there's definitely some really big rebates out there for solar, and we certainly have the land if we didn't want to put on the books. I think maybe we should take a look at that and see if that would work for us.
Is that part of the nexus?
I sure can put it on the radar to have them report out. I believe they have a June report scheduled, and I'll just make sure that they include solar as a, a piece to that.
They know, they're very little for theirs.
They live in solar?
And, yeah, they pay very little upfront, so payback period.
I mean, I'm looking, and we're putting out all LEDs into the store here shortly, and the savings is amazing. And actually, it was indirectly that they told me about the solar, so I'm kind of looking at that, too. at that too.
Yeah, with the energy efficiency that we made during that, by owning that within a couple weeks ago, just because we put it next to us, and there's definitely cost benefit for us, so I think it's something we definitely want to look into.
Any other communications received?
Yeah, there's a few other, our ball field, the grass and so on, hard to find what we're saying, baseball field, the outfield, and it is long. So I was saying, tonight, tonight's credit field, both teams. All needs is more than that's all it needs, I mean, you might have to pick up somewhere else.
Anything else today?
Nope, that's all we've heard lately.
All right.
We have the third, pretty well done.
Citizens' communications? We have Bobby, Bob May and Ingrid Berg here. Bob, you want to speak now or I'll let you speak, I believe it's for the math curriculum piece of it, would you like to speak then?
How soon you gonna be getting to that?
Do you have power?
I got time.
Okay. Ingrid?
Hi.
You, you want to speak to what?
I wanted to discuss seventh grade staffing for next year.
Oh, it's in the agenda here, sorry. All right, you want to speak to that, are you in the agenda item?
I'd be fine.
Okay. Anybody else?
We may want to reorganize the agenda to, if we have some issues. We're going to do administrative business payable or business services, or we can move around the agenda and tackle some of the other issues. But let's just do administrative business, that's pretty quick, isn't it? Credit card, student activity, approval of bills payable, should we do them together, one and two? Any questions on bills payable or credit card?
Motion by Jeff, you have a second?
Awesome.
Second by Andy. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Basting?
Upstee.
Bush?
Yes.
Dolphin?
Yes.
Hey?
Yes.
Kench?
Upstee.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Stappas?
Yes.
Approval of sweep agreement.
Sweep agreement is a longstanding agreement with a consortium of schools where they elaborately purchase equipment and then share that equipment between school districts, therefore, no single school district has the full capital cost of any one piece of equipment. We've been involved with this longer than I've been in the district, it's probably a twenty-some year consortium it appears, it's been a longstanding agreement between schools, and Roger would recommend approval.
Do you have a cost of the district at all?
Yeah, it's in the agreement itself. I believe the sweep one has a cost of four thousand, sweep two, I can.
Is that all on equipment? What do we do then, go to whatever school it's at and then haul it back here?
Yep, they have trailers that will transport between the different districts. Some states here resides, this is the home base, others reside in other locations and are moved around.
Only concern, I had, I see that a lot of the stuff bought at the same place, that's why I wonder if there's any bidding done.
The, there is a fiscal host that is Iowa Grant, and they would be the one, the entity that if there was a bid on new equipment, that would be overseeing that. So the first agreement.
I have both of them right here, who cares, give me this one.
Thank you. Exhibit B, equipment inventory sweep one, page fifty-seven, exhibit B inventory sweep two is on page fifty-eight, the Iowa Grant balance sheet of revenues expenditures, the revenue then for mineral point, looks like the budgeted amount for, this is on page sixty, exhibit A budget proposal, mineral point would contribute one hundred and fifty dollars. The, the total amount that everybody's contributing for revenue is two thousand two hundred and fifty. The next page, sweep two, again, mineral points, those are due. It's safe to say it's minimal.
It's a hundred dollars I think for.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing as well. Yeah, when you pool, when you do a consortium of fifteen schools, it takes down the revenue significantly.
Motion by Jeff, you have a second? I'm sorry, I'm gonna, send another, and this is something we've been doing. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Basting?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dolphin?
Yes.
Hey?
Yes.
Kench?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Stappas?
Yes.
Approval of boost agreement?
And the boost agreement, again, that's page sixty-five if you're looking at your packet. The fiscal host of this agreement is Riverdale Schools, we are purchasing into a consortium with five other districts, this is for our telepresence between schools. There is a shared agreement that takes care of the maintenance of the equipment on the backside, the total amount is four thousand eighty-five dollars per district. That includes one-time setup of our technology, coordinated technology and IT services so that we have a one-stop shop where we can phone in and somebody can troubleshoot the telepresence for any of the school districts, whether it be a connectivity issue or other, and we have an annual registration fee for our WebEx connection that's at nine hundred and sixty dollars per district. So I would recommend approval as the other four districts are doing with their boards this month.
What courses are being taught via boost?
Currently, we have seven students that are taking a UW Platteville literacy course, we have one student that's taking a Highland pre-calculus course, and next year we look to expand those to other offerings and offering a, two cap courses, two ASKAS courses, which would be music appreciation, culture, music culture courses.
So we have seven kids total?
Seven in just the Platteville, around in the Highland. Next year, we anticipate expanding out to potentially include accounting as a course that we would offer. We're also working at either offering or delivering calculus for those that might have a need throughout the consortium, and, you know, it's, it gives us another bank of courses that are available to us.
So it should just keep growing?
It has, yeah, every year so far, and I would think it continues to do so.
I like the motion to approve. Second by Lisa. How long have we been doing this?
This will be going into our third year.
Roll call.
Basting?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dolphin?
Yes.
Hey?
Yes.
Kench?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Stappas?
Yes.
Personnel services, all right, items for information and discussion.
Yeah.
E L L report.
I'd like to welcome Myra Angel, and if you could introduce those others that are with you, and if you don't mind coming up to that front row of seats. Myra was an independent contractor for us and has helped to get our English language learner program off the ground, and the board has not heard much about this program from its inception in our first year with Myra on board. We do have also Marsha, I think you might want to speak to her as a teacher at some point, but Myra, if you could just give us an overview of some of the roles and responsibilities that you have and talk to us a little bit, some of the strengths and weaknesses that you encountered this year, it'd be helpful for the board. Welcome.
Thank you. I have two sets of parents, well, there's a GIO's parents, the one, three of our students. I have a second eighth grade grader in the elementary building, and then I have a sixth grader here in the middle school. And she is Anthony's, sorry, mom, and Anthony came to the school, he's in the first grade, and Marsha is her teacher. And I have been able to assist, he didn't, he came from Peru, so he didn't have any English when he came. So I feel like it's been really helpful to be on, on board so that I can assist with him on his language skills. He's learning a lot, and I will have his mom, because she's not having her on too much, so I'm gonna have her maybe tell you a little bit about what she thinks the program has done for them.
Yeah, well, my name is Denise Anderson. She's correct what she's saying, my son is in first grade. My son arrived three months ago with zero knowledge of English, and it's been really amazing how the school is helping, and thanks to Myra, because it's not only in the language, like we always talked about, it's also culture. He didn't know anything, and Myra was there to help him, and thanks to also the principal to show them the school around, and at least the first week, you know, it was very critical, you know, to know where is the bathroom, where is, where he can get water, what, how he can get his lunch, because lunch, in where I am from, is totally different. I mean, it's, it's a big change for him, so having someone that's big, his language was a big help for him, so I'm talking about my personal experience.
So that's a little bit about Anthony, and he's doing really well.
Yeah, he's learning, he's learning a lot. It's, it's amazing how kids come, they learn and pick up things so easily, and in three months, he, he knows a lot, he can make short conversations for zero knowledge that he didn't know in English, I mean, he can talk to me, I can ask him, you know, in English at the house, just to test him, and, and he's doing very well, and I'm very, very happy with that, you know, with school, Myra, and all the people that are involved here.
And one of them will be Marsha, she's been really critical and, and Myra will, really, so having her on board and being open to having me in the classroom, working with him. There's also another first grader, she has been here since preschool, so she does speak English, and she's been really helpful as well. And then I have a second grader and third grader in the elementary building, and these are her parents, and they don't speak English, so I'm, I have.
I'm gonna actually interject here too. So with, with our friend Anthony in first grade, one of the decisions that we made when he joined us, you know, not knowing any English, Myra supporting six students throughout the district, we actually made an intentional decision that this child is coming to us with no English, doesn't know where to go for lunch, for the bathroom, Myra, you're on this student for the next two weeks, and the things that Myra and Mrs. Roberts are doing with Anthony is just phenomenal, I cannot emphasize that enough. It is earth-shaking, what's going on. And if it weren't for those supports, I'm not sure where Anthony would be, and it's just, they care so much and they work so hard, and, and I remember Marsha after the first couple of days, she was like, I don't know how to do this, like, we're gonna find support, I don't know what this is gonna look like, but we're gonna find something, and, and they just continue to look for ways to solve problems and, you know, and, and work through it. So it would be remiss of me if I didn't stop the meeting now and talk about this, because it is so important, what they're doing, and, and they're just finding a way to help Anthony and all of our E L L students, so thank you.
Thank you.
And then, of course, you've been really supportive and helpful, so I also want to say the piece that she talked about, it is not only the language, but the culture, and I really, really identify with Anthony, because I went through the same thing when I was a teenager, went to the States with no English, so I think it's very important that those supports are in place for these kids that not only are here, but they come with no English in their background and are, you know, the community opens the door to them to come here, so I think it's important. And then the communication piece is critical for the families, I mean, I not only assist the students, but I'm also assisting the families and the communication going to them. If there is any issues or any communication, any emails, I can translate them or I can call them, they, they know they can call me at any time, I take their phone calls, and I just feel that it's, it's very good to have that for the kids. So I just wanted to, if you have any questions.
Parent-teacher conferences, any? And even, there are translation apps for certain communications, but you even kind of said, that's not totally accurate, or that's not really sending the message that we're trying to send. So Myra can work with, I see you nodding your head back there, Marsha, can work with the teacher and can say, this is what the note is saying with the translation app, is this what you really want to communicate to them, and we can actually, you know, hone it in and really send that, the message that we need to be sending, so.
Sometimes I would use translate, translation app, and it would take me ten minutes to get a two-step direction to where I understood it, where with Myra, in two minutes or less, he understands what he needs to do and carries through on it. I mean, it's amazing, he just wrote a book, a ten-page story in both English and Spanish.
Beautiful.
So.
He's thriving, so I thank Marsha and the school, because I think that they're doing a great job, and it's been amazing, it's been a great opportunity for me, coming from a bilingual background and with my own children, this has been a great experience for me, so I look forward to maybe working with the district some more, and if you have any other further questions, you can address me.
Myra, you've done a nice job of explaining some of the facilitation that's happening within the school day, but there's a whole other piece to this where your cell phone is ringing in the evenings and weekends, and maybe share an example or a story of how you're able to support families above and beyond the school day.
I think Denise, Mrs. Gordon sent a letter, and it was a pickup where he, one of the kids needed to bring a book for the library, that's a good, a good example. And she just texted me and said, you know, is there any way that you can communicate with the parent, they make sure that he brings the book on Monday, and that was done. But also, there's other times where they, there's a child is sick and they have called me first, so that I can in turn call the school and let them know that the child is not coming. There was another time where they weren't sure if the bus was gonna take him to home or was gonna, what was gonna happen with the pickup, because the father was working. So they called me and I was able to call someone at the school and, you know, kind of communicate that, and so it was peace of mind to them that they have somebody that they can call at any, at any moment. And I have agreed to do that, I mean, I, I really don't have a problem answering calls in the weekends, or, it, it's very rewarding for me, the kind of work, just because I like, I like what I do and I like helping them, so it's really not something that I want to say, you can only call me Monday to Friday, but if you have something come up, you know, it's not always, not always possible, but they really know that they can count on me answering and getting their point across.
Any questions for Myra? For the family?
Except one other thing I'd like to say is that I noticed the frustration level has immensely dropped with Myra there for Anthony and for my other students, and the comprehension level for the student that's been there, this is her second year, yes, she could read, but was she understanding the vocabulary? No, but her comprehension level has just risen like, I couldn't believe it. Words we take for granted that she didn't understand and know the meaning of, she now knows, and she will ask, and so will Anthony, they're not afraid to say, I don't understand, so.
I'm gonna call her in a stand if they have anything to add. Yo le explicaba a ellos que importante es lo que yo hago con los niños, y entonces quería saber si ustedes querían hacer cualquier comentario de cómo se sienten ustedes sabiendo que la escuela tiene una persona que ayuda a los niños cuando vienen en inglés o saben menos inglés que los demás. Yo cuando pueden llamarme para cualquier cosa. Yo pienso que es, es parte de su tranquilidad personal, de saber que tienen una persona que nos ayuda.
Sí, porque lo tal que nos ayudan como a darle sigui y enseñar a los niños, nosotros no podemos, bueno, yo no les puedo ayudar así con las tareas.
no podemos, bueno, yo no les puedo ayudar así con las tareas, porque es diferente. Estudiar, porque yo estamos estudiando.
She says that it's been very helpful having, it's a peace of mind for them, because they really couldn't assist them with their homework. She didn't really, she doesn't have really the education background to even help them, even if it was in Spanish. So it's just been a peace of mind to know that I'm assisting them even with the things that they may not understand. So, and then, you know, the phone calls, too, when they have a question on something that they don't understand.
For the board's awareness, when students that have English as a second language are residing in the district, there's no new funds to try to support a program for our ELL learners. However, when students transfer into the district, there is an opportunity to petition the Department of Public Instruction for funds, because that student wasn't always residing in your community. Anthony is our first student in my tenure that has transferred into the district from another country, and his predominantly speaking language is Spanish. So I do have a letter before the Department of Public Construction that would request a revenue limit exemption to allow extra funding for this particular program to continue as a permanent part of our needs as long as we have ELL learners in our school district. So I will be informing the board as soon as I know the results from that request for consideration, and with any looks and support, we'll get some revenue from the transfer of service request that's before the DPI at this time. Thank you for coming in, I appreciate it.
Thank you. We have some people that wanna speak, too.
Probably down.
Please, you don't have to go through there. Yes, Matt, first one.
The order to the, yeah, it's an action item, I believe, number three. Yes, thank you.
All right. The math team has undergone a two-year selection and adoption process to review resources in the courses of Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II.
Are you serious? Are you serious? I never know. Sorry.
The team reviewed multiple resources, met with vendors, conducted site reviews, and ultimately selected Big Ideas Math from Boden Math. The cost of instruction materials for a set is sixty dollars, is sixty dollars.
For a set of sixty, it shouldn't have a, just a set of sixty is six thousand fifty-seven dollars per course.
Okay.
Thanks for that. Can you take your citizens' comment, and we can go into any questions for the board as well?
This isn't the twenty thousand dollar expenditure, right?
Well, at least six times three courses over one, here on three hundred and two, so roughly eighteen, and change.
We did have a citizen's want to speak, Bobby May.
We're on that, we're on that math item.
Oh, okay. I couldn't hear you. Well, first of all, I'd like to say I'm glad I stuck around here, that ELL presentation. I had to ask Marcia what that even stood for, I'd never heard of it before, but it's pretty impressive, in my opinion. As far as the, am I correct, we're thinking you, you folks, your board's gonna vote on this, new math books, new Common Core math books tonight, is that correct?
There is a math resource in front of the board for approval tonight, yes.
Okay. So, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think I am, because I talked to Matt Lindsey today. My recollection from a year and a half ago, and I haven't been very faithful to come to school board meetings, but I was pretty passionate about what I was hearing, actually that wasn't even the reason I came for back then, but it's a pretty controversial subject. I got into some, you know, maybe some little controversy ground with Brad Brody and Luke, maybe you, and anyway, at that time, the president, the school board president, and Matt Lindsey, if I, if my recollection serves me, and he verified it today, that he voted to table that issue at the time, is that your remembrance, when we were discussing it? Because the whole school board at that time didn't really know much about Common Core. Is that, is that your recollection? Because that's mine. I mean, you were asking each other, what's wrong with Common Core, and what's good about, so we got speakers in here, and Sessa brought some speakers in, got some very good input from both sides. Sessa brought some stuff, and I was like, "Well, that makes sense," and so did the speakers that come out of Madison. But the, to me, the issue here is that at that time, your president and you voted to table it at the time, and do some research on, if you weren't gonna do Common Core, was there something better to replace it with? Okay? So I guess, Luke, I would present this to you, did somebody research that, and if so, what were the findings on that research?
Yeah, the board did take action and adopt the Wisconsin standards as the framework going forward, and by state statute, they need to recommit to that annually, and so that has been adopted two years running now.
Okay. So this would be my question, if you're voting, it's like a twenty-two thousand dollar expenditure, is that correct?
About eighteen thousand, I believe.
I thought it was twenty-two, and you got a rebate, and that was a bunch of shit, and it come to twenty-one something, didn't it?
The professional development, if you're including that, yes, but just the core resource itself is six thousand times three courses.
Okay. Well, anyway, here would be the question I'd present you, if you're voting on this tonight, to spend that money, whatever the figure is, we'll say it's eighteen thousand dollars. And I, I look at our whole presidential process on a national basis, and I'm amazed that with three hundred million people, we're down to the three candidates we are, I'm not a supporter of any one of them, but I do know that on the Republican ticket, you got Donald Trump, who says, one of the first five things he's gonna do if he becomes president, I'm not suggesting he will, I don't support any one of the three. But the point is, if he does become the president, he swears that one of the five things he's gonna do if he becomes president is eliminate Common Core from our, from our public schools. So is this something that has to happen tonight? Or would it not make more sense to wait and see where that goes?
I think the clarification here is that we're not adopting the Common Core tonight, that's not the action item. The action item before the board is approving the resource that would be taught in the math courses, more specifically, the textbook. And so it's not so much that we're adopting or not adopting Common Core, is that we're adopting a resource that we're gonna use to teach math.
You lost, what does that mean?
So we've got three textbooks here, Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, and that's what we're asking the board to approve, is the purchase of those textbooks, that's part of the board policy, they approve those resources. Math team has studied over half a dozen different curriculums over the last two years, have weeded through and removed some of them, and they believe that this is the best textbook resource, as well as some technology pieces that would propel the math students forward, going into the near future.
Okay, I don't feel like I understand all that, but so will that be Common Core math when we get those, those new books in, or will it not?
Most of the textbooks that we looked at are, all have some type of alignment to the Wisconsin standards, some are more aligned than others, but that wasn't a major criteria for us when we were looking at which resource to choose. We were more considering the updating. Right now, we know that there's more rigor pushed down in this particular book, I'll give you an example, in Algebra I, they start off with adding and subtracting integers. In the new book that we're looking for, they start off with linear equations, which is chapter three of the old book. So essentially, the new textbook pushes down rigor. The other thing that we can show is that currently, they teach one chapter on equations that's now broke up over two chapters. So it takes the time that's needed where, you know, the kids have the most pain points, but it also pushes down the rigor we wanna see in our classroom. So that's really the criteria, there's a technological component to this as well, that is a pretty exciting feature to this particular company. And I've got a math teacher here, Ms. Knowtham, that can kinda demonstrate some of the results that she's seen with her students, that she demoed it, which would be another real big reason why we chose this over some other vendors.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
So the current math products we're using are eight years old?
Yeah, there's, there's some varying differences on the books, but here would be an example of an Algebra I, and I actually took one of the better books off the shelf, this is not, you know, staged by any means. So that's the old book versus the new Algebra I book, and you can kinda look at the difference in how they present the material and how they engage students, engagement's a big piece. There's also geometry, which we can send the other way, so you can see again a comparison of geometry to geometry. We have Algebra II as well, very requested kinda seeing the old versus the new. But sitting you and Ben and Mike Chambers and others have kinda vetted a lot of these, and maybe highlight the differences between the old to the new, and some of the things that you're seeing.
Sure, absolutely. So one of the things that I really liked about the Big Ideas Math, which was that book's frontrunner, or decision, was there a pretty high percentage of inquiry-based in their approach to the instruction. So that, I worked with Ms. Schaefer, Ms. Anna Schaefer, over the last few years, when she was working with her district as an instructional coach, and one of my big goals was to be much more hands-on, so letting the students look at things through some wonderful free tools online, like GeoGebra, and some of the free graphing calculators that in the past have been cost prohibitive for students, I mean, a graphing calculator used to cost a hundred and ten dollars to put in their hands, and now with having the Chromebooks, there's so many of those tools, that this particular textbook series has completely built in. So I would be happy to pull up the online resources, if that would be an option to show, and to show you some of the things that I'm talking about, because it's a little bit hard to understand, if I'm necessarily seeing. So I would be happy to.
You wanna do that?
Why are there even books? I mean, if all the kids are Chromebooks, why do we even have books?
You wanna answer why books? I can take it to you.
Sure, absolutely. That was certainly one of the things when we were starting to look at options, that crossed our mind of, are we going to need books, or will we just purely be online? And I think one of the things that we still have to consider is those students that, at their houses, they do not have internet access. And so even through the demo, there's been some frustrations expressed to me from the students that don't have internet at home, where, you know, they don't have a study hall, there are students who are in multiple things, and frustrated that, when are they going to do this? So I was curious when the coach gave it myself, of if there would be options of purely online versus online textbooks, and it appears that it's a package, that it's really not an additional cost for having the textbooks, and I think that our students would find the benefits of both, that a lot of them still like to have that physical piece in front of them, versus trying, you know, look at their screen and looking like this, that can be a frustration.
I was just gonna add, I mean, the screen for the Chromebooks are smaller than the screen you see here, and to do your entire math course for a year on a screen that's nine inches is pretty painful on the eye, and it's just not conducive for how all math is learned. And we know that blended learning is the best way. It's not all textbook, I would be hard-pressed to suggest that a textbook-only course is the best way to go, any more than a fully online embedded course would be the only way to go. That blended learning is the strategies that we've found from research that are truly the best, because kids learn differently. Some kids like to turn a page, some kids like to press next, and each one of those is a different medium for kids to learn from. Cancel, yeah, I'm sorry.
See the password, like, there, right? Okay. So this is the teacher's version of it. One of the things that I would like to show you is this dynamic classroom. So this is an amazingly souped-up version of our current online textbook access, so with our current online textbook, it literally is just a PDF of the textbook, it's exactly what you see in the textbook and nothing else. So I'm just gonna pick, for example, the topic that we're on right now, the circumference area and volume. So when I go into this, I can go into any one of the sections. And so this, for me, is a very powerful tool, I'm able to pull up any of the examples, the students would have the same access through their dynamic version. I made a bad choice, because I really wanted you to see one of the ones where...
Can I take it for you? Because I know this.
A little bit small, okay, thank you. Let me try this here. And I apologize, this was kind of a last minute, thought I was gonna be here, so I'm sorry, didn't have a ton of things prepared here. I'll try this again. So what I'm looking for is one of the sections that has instant, there we go. Okay, so this interactive exploration, so this is the piece that I was talking about, and in the teacher's edition, which you have the student version in front of you, but in the teacher's edition, one of the big pieces to this is the suggestions to teachers of how best to present the material to catch students' attention. And so then, along with that, the technology piece, with our smart boards, having those, and then the students having them in front of them, is all of these investigations are pre-built in. So this is gonna sound a little bit selfish on my part, but some of it is the ease of putting that technology in their hands, and just having that instant access instead of our current textbooks, where there's very limited investigation. So I really think that we'll find with our students, when they're having to come up with the concepts themselves, but it's being put in front of them, that that's just one small piece of this that is really going to help boost their understanding. One of the other things that was a big appeal to us was being able to do their assignments through this website. So the exact same problems as you're flipping through here, the exact same problems that you're seeing as the typical practice, you're able to, student by student, assign particular problems. So I could be assigning every student the exact same problems, or I could be layering my assignment of those that I think need that additional enrichment and can handle those harder problems, and then those that were really just concerned about those essential learning targets and being able to really just get the foundations first. And the students don't have to know that's happening, they don't necessarily know that one student is getting something different than another. And so I thought that when we heard the presentation from the vendor, that was one of the things that just had my, like, immediate attention of how fantastic that is. Once the students have done an assignment, I'll show you here, because we did, through our demo version, which was really nice, that we were able to have full-blown access to all of this through a free demo, we were able to do a couple of the assignments through here, and of course, with any, anything new, there was a couple of headaches along the way, and just figuring out how to put things in. But the reports that come back on the teacher's side of things are absolutely phenomenal here. Okay. So in the circles unit, in this last one, I'm gonna click on report here. Okay, so this is just kind of the general overview, once the students all submitted their work, I was able to see that it went very well for my students, so there was no one showing up where, no question showing up where multiple people were missing them. But this is a really powerful piece. So when I click on show details, and I hope it's okay with their names, when they're shown here, it was just a trial, not okay. Mrs. Hay, okay.
Yeah, the demo.
Not, what's that?
It's the demo, we're fine, yeah.
Okay. So the, I wonder if I can blow it up where we can't see the names. Um, I'm...
Yeah, you just wanna blow it up really big?
Yeah, just so we can take the names out of there and just see that.
See what we can do here. And that, don't need any of that stuff.
Just need to be...
Over.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's gonna be tuning.
Possibly, of course, the names can be continued appropriately.
They stay static, so, back down.
Yeah. Great. So the piece I wanted to show you here is actually this, and this again is just practice, and one of the things with all of my students, anytime we're doing homework, this is not a quiz or a test, this is the first time that they're seeing it, so absolutely, there's going to be errors, and that's part of the learning process. But one of the things that I love being able to see here is for any student that missed a question, I can pull up and see exactly how they answered it. So, you know, it's no more hiding behind a piece of paper and being afraid to ask a question if they didn't get it right when we're checking those assignments in class. I know who's missing them, I know what they're putting, and if I'm seeing this comment, you know, everybody answered sixty-five, then obviously, there's an issue that we need to address in the whole class. So in terms of the communication that's coming to me, I can't see anything but incredibly positive things coming out of this tool.
So it sounds like what is driving the decision is more the, the technology behind it?
That's a huge part of it, and then, like, Dr. Francois referred to the rigor. So Ron Larson, in particular, is a calculus down, author, is a calculus down author, so like he said, the rigor's really being pushed down. Our current textbooks, I honestly have barely used our geometry textbook the last two years, so it's been a lot of pulling from other materials, and I've always found myself incredibly drawn to the Ron Larson textbooks, whenever he is one of the publisher or one of the authors. Because of the level of rigor in questioning and the organization, I find it to be by far the best that I've seen, and Mr. McWilliams has expressed the exact same thing.
And how many different vendors did you work at?
If you would've walked in my classroom about my year, you would've thought that I was moving in or out. We have literally boxes piled everywhere of going through, even our current textbook, just their updated version, and it just didn't even compare. So I would say it was between, I think it was seven or eight.
Seven or nine, it's, yeah, it was an odd number.
Andrew was amazing in doing all of the correspondence and asking for all of the samples.
We've also been following closely, there's some other districts nearby, Platteville is one that we've looked to, to watch their renewal process and to try to, as a litmus test, check in with them. I don't know if they've actually settled in on a curriculum that I'm not aware of, and we ultimately believe that because of the information we've been able to gather and compare and contrast, that this is the best decision from Middle Point, they might follow our suit, but this is what I believe will give our students the best opportunity to be successful in math going forward. And this is, again, a five-year purchase, so when you amateurize over five years, it probably will extend longer, these books are... These books are a lot longer than five years. But the curriculum renewal process, we look at every course in a five-year cycle of rotation. So this actually started as a conversation almost two and a half years ago, laying out the foundation. Last year, we updated our social studies curriculum. This year, it's the math curriculum. But we continue to move down the line and looking at curriculums. And we're not gonna revisit math for a while. So this is a pretty big decision and we didn't take it lightly. It's certainly something that I believe will help our math program.
I had occasion to kind of, a little pondering the other day, I was standing by a gate. I wasn't watching and it fell on my foot. Now, that was a four-foot gate. So when it fell to the ground, it was horizontal, it was four foot away with point. How far did that really fall?
Should we use polar coordinates?
Yeah, right. Right. So you're asking the actual length of the fall?
Yeah.
Yeah, so wonderful that that was the topic that we covered today in talking about, yeah, it really was. In talking about arc length. And that was exactly what our students learned today in geometry.
Well, how far did it fall? I mean?
Yep, so it was perfectly vertically.
It was 90 degrees, it fell to 180.
Yep. So that would've fallen one-fourth of the circle's circumference. And so you said that the height was four feet?
Right.
Yep, so eight pi. And then one-fourth of that. So two pi. One-fourth of pi.
One-fourth of pi, so two pi.
Two pi.
Well, you said it went two meters, so it's fallen away.
Ah, good catch.
That's why I think different learning styles.
Absolutely.
It would've been pi times, pi times the diameter then.
Right.
Divided by four. So what's that?
So two pi. So approximately six points two eight?
Pretty close.
Bless your thoughts.
How long, how fast do I want to get?
Are these?
Six two eight.
We're still aligning the topic. Do we still, after seventh grade, it won't move? It goes into the?
So is there a?
I just. Is there, I have a question. After seventh grade, if you're looking at prior minutes, we split students into pre-algebra or algebra with the rigor of Algebra I and starting deeper into it, is there a concern or a plan? Because looking at that, one of the concerns is we didn't test grade and some of the things those students missed in eighth grade.
Sure, yeah.
If we're starting deeper, is there a, a plan for, now that we're starting at linear equations instead of, which is chapter five in that book, is there a plan to cover or catch those students?
So one, one of the things that we already have in place is the course called Math Strategies. And so while Mr. McWilliams teaches Algebra I, I have been fortunate enough to teach Math Strategies. And I will tell you, it is absolutely my favorite course to teach because that's exactly the point of that class. Is for those students who are identified as struggling math learners, they're seeing me for a second full period of math every day.
I'm not even concerned about the struggling math learners. It's the ones that are excelling but are missing the, the point of entering seventh grade into linear equations.
Sure, absolutely. So if they haven't been identified as that, in need of that additional class, we also have that hard TI time. And then we'll be using, so without the Apex that's been purchased is going to be one of the tools that we'll be utilizing to help with those things. And especially now that we have the full access to all of those courses, we'll be able to really, I think, pull and utilize from that tool as well going forward.
It sounds like the technology would enable you to tell what they're getting or not.
What they may be doing or not.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
That's awesome. And to that point, Apex learning is a, is, you know, obviously, we're gonna teach it the best we can using this resource. Some students aren't gonna get it that way. And so the Apex pulls in a second way to reteach and relearn in a whole different medium that's outside of the textbook or learning environment that we're currently employing. So that's really, I think, the power of layering in so that there's multiple ways that we're trying to teach the same concept to ensure, and again, this gets back to, and we're identifying what's guaranteed, that we will make sure every student's gonna learn, whether we teach it once, twice, or three times in three different ways. We're gonna keep working on it until we can guarantee it.
I've got another question. I thought we used to have Algebra in eighth grade, we don't anymore?
We do. For some students, we have Algebra in eighth grade.
Oh, I thought we were eliminating that. Common Core, eliminate the Cellar Diver from eighth grade. I understand.
We actually don't, yeah, we don't follow a, a Common Core model. We essentially, if the kid is, we look at usually three different data point sets. But if a kid is accelerated in math and can do Algebra at seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, we meet them where they're at with what they need, when they need it. And at that point, then we start to build the supports or scaffold around that to make sure that they're successful in that course.
Well, the question I've got is, we voted one time on the Common Core curriculum. We didn't vote, actually, like Bobby stated, it was tabled. And sent back to the policy committee. And I was at the policy committee meeting and it was never taken up, never voted on, and therefore it renders it dead. Because anything that is tabled has to be the first item at the next meeting. Or it is no longer on any agenda or it is, same thing is deemed to not pass.
We approved the curriculum or the standards that are used annually. And this last year was unanimous.
I don't care. We voted to have no Common Core curriculum. It was never passed.
It, it was passed.
No, it wasn't. It was sent back to the policy committee and it was never acted on, which makes it a dead, according to Robert's Rules of Order, or are we using Linsky's Rules for radicals, or what are we using there?
Where did we sit at the elementary school? Mrs. Boyle gave that presentation a year or two back. Did, do we update math curriculum at the elementary?
At the elementary, yes, we did. We went to math investigations, which recently, expressions, thank you for those investigations for expressions. And recently, Education Weekly gave that particular math curriculum a very strong ranking on its overall rigor. There was only one that was deemed to be better. But ours was, if you looked at eight categories, seven out of eight were, like, I would say proficient. And the other one was eight out of eight. But there's some that a lot of schools have adopted. Everyday Math, for example, scored extremely poor on that same ranking and scale. So I was somewhat validated that the curriculum work that the elementary did last year to move to Math Expressions was well-done and was right where we needed to be based on this most recent research. And these now K through sixth graders are going to be moving into seventh through 12. And we want to have them meet with the same rigor as they're leaving with. So we don't want to overlap and, and kind of go backwards to go forwards. I'm just trying to find the, the meeting dates. I thought it was a December-January board item. I might be able to find it while we're talking, but essentially, go ahead.
To Bobby's point, is there any concern if the standards are changed by politics, that that will trickle down to us and we will, is there any concern that we will in two years be looking at different math curriculum? Or is this covering us for whatever, do you foresee this covering us for whatever the, the politicians decide our kids need to know?
Right. And I, I think that's the point to reiterate, is this really is not, whether we did or didn't adopt Common Core is beside the point. That's not the focus of this action item. This action item is about the resource that we're gonna use to teach math. And so if Common Core comes or Common Core goes, we will still use this resource to teach math.
Right, and that's my point. This will be good.
Yes, good regardless.
I move that we approve this purchase of this curriculum. Also, Matt?
We've got a motion and a second. Oh, discussion.
It's 18,000 once, or is it 18,000 each year?
No, one-time fee.
Twenty-one-nine-eighty-three, something, isn't it?
That's just the resource. There is professional development. If we choose to, to purchase that, and I think it was $2,400 in addition, but the actual resource is the 6,000 per?
Well, are you getting the other, if you're getting the other, it's listed in here, then that's in the cost too.
Correct, 6,000.
Twenty-one-nine-eighty-three or whatever.
Correct.
Twenty-two thousand dollars roughly.
Correct, 6,057 dollars per course for a set of 16 times three courses. Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II is what is before the board.
Any other questions? Discussion?
At five years, you said, Luke?
Minimum.
Minimum, yeah. These were his last.
Right. We would start a renewal process that wouldn't look any earlier than five years ago.
All right, staff, roll call.
Hey?
Yes.
Kench?
No.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Fasting?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dolphin?
Epstein.
And Stetson?
No. Why would you assume?
I don't know anything about these books, what they're even talking about. How, could there be any better before we cut? The answers are, in math, they're not the same in our, how to get teachers. If they're gonna go around, here's all the different ways to teach something. We need more staff. They teach you one way, give them another, me another. How are we gonna do that with the staff we got now?
Thank you for clarifying. So a motion carried. Credit.
Yes.
You think professional development, do you want to do that now?
We're, the budget development, I think, too, going back to major.
Okay, I was.
Okay. The budget is on page 68 of seventh grade.
Sure, we can do that, absolutely. We'll start with seventh grade. Ingrid, you've waited patiently, then you?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
My name is Ingrid Berg, and I'm here on behalf of my family. My husband, Bob Janekka, is regretfully out of town on work. We have one daughter, Ellie Janekka, she's a sixth grader. We moved to Mineral Point last summer. And now that we've been here nearly a year, we've had a lot of people check in with us and ask us how things have been going, how was your daughter's school year? And it's with a lot of solidity and comfort that we've been able to say how pleased we've been, how welcome our daughter has felt, how much she's enjoyed her school year, and how much we appreciate the resources that have been allocated for her as one of the sixth graders. We came from a county of a million people in the Chicagoland area to a county with demonstrably fewer people. And so it was with some dismay. You might appreciate that we were concerned that the, the current sixth grade class would only have two sections going into the seventh grade. I apologize, I was not aware of the, the meeting last month when that decision was brought up and voted on. And so I very much appreciate the opportunity to address the board and ask, respectfully ask that there be some more discussion of the number of sections for the seventh graders next year. I know it's not news to all of you that, that how children do, that their outcomes are often tied to, intrinsically tied to the, the number of teachers that they have, that the resources devoted to teachers and, and quality and, the quality of the staffing in terms of numbers directly impacts kids' outcome, directly impacts their education and their schooling. You know, I'm very biased for the sixth grade. I just saw so many of them just beautifully in their band concerts and choir concerts the last week. And so I know that there's a lot of talent there. And again, I just would really urge the board to reconsider. And if there can't be a third section, it would be my hope that in the future, that an issue as important and critical as class size could be discussed much, much earlier in the school year. And also that we can max out all the resources to help the students, given the fewer teachers that they have in the seventh grade. And I look forward to learning what all those resources are in the next six years that my daughter is a member of the school district. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thanks. And that leads to our geniative regarding of the seventh grade staffing levels. As the board recalls, we had a proposal in front of the board last month to add staffing to support small class sizes, specifically in our current sixth grade class that has 62, 63 kids in it. Not adding that staffing would've looked at potentially classes of 30 or 31. Within our current framework, we were forced to, to look at, how can we redevelop a staffing plan that would do, just as, as Ingrid had asked, which is create another section of seventh grade, because you believe that 30 in that particular class is going to be challenging. Although it wasn't the intent to make wholesale change, we were able to come up with a plan that does reallocate our staff in a way that does create a third section. To, to share with the board what that means is in both math and science, Mr. Chambers and Mr. Van Galen will slide out of their lunch duty tier-two supports, and they will slide into a first-period, second-period math-science combo. We haven't quite solved the problem of how to backfill the piece that they're vacating around the lunch duty that they had, which we call Lunch Bunch, which was support for students that weren't completing their homework assignment. That's a work in progress. We will then bring Ms. Upinat down from the high school in English Language Arts. She will need to come down to the middle school and teach a section there of English Language Arts. We will pull Ms. McCoy out of Instructional Coaching for Technology and the library to support a section of reading. And then we will pull Mr. Burrisson down from the high school. And he will then slide down to pick up a course in Social Studies to get that section covered. In Physical Education and Health, we need to pull Mr. Leonard out of the Special Education Department in order to cover two periods of the day for his certified area of health and PE. So with those supports in place, we would be able to create a third section. It is noted that some students in seventh grade simply will not have a study hall. That's just, it's not possible to make that type of a shift and still have study hall available for some seventh graders at all. But we found a way to, to continue to support that third section. And we feel it's a workable solution, although not ideal.
So would you say the biggest impacts are the tier-two supports? Continue.
That would be the, yeah, the biggest impact is certainly no tier-two supports for the middle school group. We, we need to come up with a solution for that. That was a program that's been successful for us over the past few years. And we'd actually like to expand that to include now the high school as those sixth through eighth graders are moving up to ninth through 12. They kind of have gotten to that rhythm of sometimes I may not be able to eat lunch with friends because I don't have homework assignments completed. But we were struggling to find staffing to cover that at the high school level, let alone now the middle school level. So we'll continue to work on that as, as the months go forward to see if we can free staff up for that particular piece. You know, obviously, when we pull people out of their specialty area, the special education services are going to be a little bit larger case loads with the time that we have available. You know, we, we were able to do this in a way that doesn't create any additional overloads. So we don't have teachers teaching seven or eight periods a day. But that does push sections together at the high school, which creates some larger class sizes there. But in lieu of the seventh grade teams and their supports and their needs, we thought this was the better place to put our staffing to try to address that need.
Sixth grade class has three teachers then?
The sixth grade class does have three teachers.
And it's not fifty-one, it's good, or not?
I'd have to go back to my.
That's okay, okay.
Sorry, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
Fifth and sixth ones, like 53, the other fifth and one, something like that.
You can grab it pretty quickly if you'd like.
No, I think that's better.
It is.
I still, why is it that we, we left three in sixth grade with a much smaller size class than the seventh grade? Because I thought when we hired that sixth grade teacher, the third one, for that big class, that that teacher was supposed to follow that class.
Yeah, I'll just pull up the enrollment. It's a larger class. There would be some pretty large class sizes there. And the second piece to that is there is some challenges to meet the needs of those students as well. And
What's the actual enrollment instead of the FTE enrollment?
The actual enrollment, let me take one question at a time, if that's okay.
Well, no, but I mean, I just, I don't need to know now. I just like the.
Sure. I will get you the actual enrollment. Basically, it's, it's actual butts and seats except for pre-K, which is not included in here in their guide, at 60%.
All right, so these are actual numbers.
Yeah, these are the actual numbers of what we're projecting to go forward next year for 16, 17. More specifically, the sixth grade at three sections is still class sizes of 17. Obviously, if we move that to two sections, the numbers go up from there. And we just felt with knowing what the current needs of the fifth grade class is, and also it's a pivotal year as they transition from an elementary to a middle school environment. It's a smaller fish in a bigger pond, and there's a lot of adjustments that happen there as well. We felt that those three supports are still very much needed in the sixth grade.
I think you guys did a great job reassigning staff so that we can alleviate some of that problem. And that's great.
We did our best. I think we've got something that's workable. Move back to the tier-three supports. Tier-three supports. In this particular case, if you remember that. In this particular case, if you remember, that position was going to be a half-time position to give supports around the courses that needed to be taught. The other half of the position would be for instructional coaching and tier-three supports. Just remember that your tier-three supports, we teach kids in a tier-one environment, everybody gets a rigorous instruction across the curriculum. When kids don't learn, we reteach in tier-two, and when kids don't have the foundational skills to be retaught, because they never learned multiplication or they don't read at grade level, they need additional intensive supports, tier-three. We need to put some of our best teachers working with them in small groups, one, two, or three at the most, working to bring their foundational skills up so they can learn. We currently don't have anybody specifically in grades three through eight to support at that level. Tier-three in the K through one and two is our Title-I program, and Rachel Schrader fills that void for us in the early primary grades, but we have a lot of requests for supports, not just in literacy, but also in math, and we're not even getting to the literacy. There's just nobody there because we're all teaching secondary batteries out of the day. So to get to that level of support, I think we have to look at how we use our Title-I supports, and we may have to look at it as a district-wide support rather than focusing in on just our primary grades. We also have to look at what other teachers are available to support instructional coaching and intervention specialists. I have been in contact with an elementary teacher that I think could support a Title III interventionist position, and reallocating that position would cause us to relook at how we configure our primary grades. Specifically, I have shared or had a conversation with Kimberly Devenbach in the second grade team, I'm sorry, first grade team. Kimberly is a nationally board-certified teacher. She also is a teacher that has a special education certification. She is one that I believe could support in a tier-three intervention role along with Rachel. And if we reconfigure how we use our staffing, certainly pulling out of the first grade team would need to find somebody to fill that void. We have a very small kindergarten class right now with currently thirty-seven students rolling into kindergarten, so my suggestion would be to move a kindergarten teacher up to fill Miss Devenbach's position in first grade, thereby creating a tier-three support, which is something that K-8 has been asking for specifically, as well as backfill some of the instructional coaching that we're not getting to. So that, again, is some of the fallout of not having that extra body. We have to work within the confines of the staffing that we do have. The rub there is obviously getting tier-three supports in lieu of a larger class size in kindergarten. Currently, classes would go from either twelve or thirteen in kindergarten across three sections to eighteen or nineteen kids across two sections, and those numbers have been consistent with numbers that we've had in the past, and I believe that we can still support our kindergarten class, but also give the other grade levels the supports they need.
So when you say tier-three for three through eight, if we're saying that we're taking out the tier-two for middle school, it's really, I mean, it would just really be that second-level intervention for most of the middle school, right? So it's not.
Correct. It would certainly, you know, one of the options would be to use this person as a tier-two support, minimize the amount of tier-three we can get to, but still.
Right.
How many kids are we talking?
Well, typically, when you get to tier-three, you're talking about five percent of your population.
Also, in a given class.
In a given class, yeah. And it's because it's so intensive, it's your most needy five kids, or five percent of kids are your population, so, you know, you're roughly looking at thirty-five kids across the district that either aren't reading or doing math at grade level, that need some intensive supports, embedded throughout the day. There is another piece that we're looking at, that I'm specifically looking at, which is also offering some opportunities after school that would be more directed. Kids would have to stay as a non-negotiable if they're not reading at grade level. We would run a late bus out to area locations where people could pick up kids from a geographical hub, if you would, but right now, a barrier is that I don't have a ride home if I stay, and we need to remove those barriers and get the kids the extra support. The best way to get those supports is additional time and specialized instruction, somebody that's got the qualifications to know how to diagnose and fix the strategies that would help students. It's a pretty rigorous plan, and I would just conclude with, my goal is, three years from now, we have a hundred percent proficiency in literacy in grade three. That's been a strategic plan for us for quite some time. Currently, we're in that sixty to seventy percent range of proficiency in language arts. To get to a hundred percent proficiency, all kids are reading at grade level by the end of third grade, is a really lofty goal, but if we get there, we essentially eliminate all of our need for response to intervention because kids are proficient, and we can then focus those energies right now that we're trying to do in tier-two and tier-three into other areas that will further advance our kids.
Do you think this will backfill or replace a little bit the tier-twos that we lost in seventh grade? Are some of those kids identified as tier-three kids that we would still be supporting with some of the lost supports?
Yeah, I think we have to look at that as an opportunity to fill in some of those lost supports, because a tier-three is only vibrant if you have a tier-two in place. It's kind of a layered system of supports, and we continue to embed more and more opportunities to make sure that struggling students are worked with, and unless we're doing the reteaching well, it matters not working with them one-on-one because they're not getting in the classroom, so. To your point, I think, yes, that would have to be part of that job or role is to try to backfill some of those areas lost.
According to the report last month, there's only seventeen out of the sixty-two that aren't on the honor roll. In seventh grade? Well, in sixth grade now. That's seventy-two percent. A little over seventy-two.
Any questions on tier-three supports? Is this initiative, do you want to get enacted?
Yeah, this would move forward, I would start to put some pieces in place. I have not discussed with all the stakeholders involved with moving parts yet, so I need to continue to work on solidifying some of these supports and making sure that all of the staffing is in place. Yeah, that would be the next step that is.
All right. Anything else on seventh grade staffing levels? Have we covered everything?
I think we've covered everything on my list. Any questions, let me know.
Question? Balanced budget.
Page sixty-eight. So it's actually sixty-nine now that I looked at it in my board packet, sixty-eight or sixty-nine. What I have done is given the board a budget comparison of fifteen-sixteen to sixteen-seventeen, and you can see overall summary limits of the budget as a comparison in revenue and expenditures. If you notice that our total revenue is down from eleven-four-twenty-nine to eleven-three-twelve. Our expenditures are reduced accordingly, eleven-four-twenty-nine down to eleven-three-twelve. So despite that, if you look toward the bottom, and you see underneath the expenditures, the actual surplus slash deficit, right now, I'm showing a zero-dollar deficit. I believe that we will be able to present a balanced budget to the board. Initially, our projections were that we would need about thirty-eight thousand dollars of fund balance in order for us to meet all of our needs for this school year. We are currently, I believe, projected to not have to borrow against fund balance, and that's something that is a goal of mine going in, I didn't know if I could make that happen, but we're there. The next month in June, I will give the board a preliminary budget, which will be a line item by line item. We can have finance committee meetings prior to that to go through those items one by one, to answer any questions. You'll be able to see a percent increase, a decrease in each item of the budget, and ask more questions about line items, but right now, from a global context, we're able to budget without having to borrow from fund balance. The other piece I would note is the total property tax levy, if you notice, was three million nine forty-four last year. This year, the total property tax levy is three million eight eighty-seven, will actually be levying less again this year than we did last year. Unfortunately, the state's portion of the shared cost does not find that that would be a net decrease in actual mill rate, but it will be a decrease in the amount that's levied. Our open enrollment right now in this particular projection shows flat. Later tonight in the board action, you will approve, hopefully, a request for five additional ins over outs, and that has been a trend that has shifted. We used to have, upon my arrival, more kids open-rolling out of the district than coming in, and again, we continue to increase every year, and we'll have a net increase of five over the sixty-one-forty-six split this year. So that will be before you shortly. Any questions that I can answer, please let me know.
When Scott Groll came here in the fall, was it anticipated that we would have a nice balanced budget like this, or that we would be dipping into the fund balance?
It was projected that we'd be dipping in the fund balance, just shy of forty thousand.
Sixty-nine.
That was with a lower than past raise, correct?
Correct.
That was, we raised about two percent higher.
We raised about two percent higher, so we had, we had projected, there's a lot of different projections, we can go back, it might be a great exercise in the finance committee to go back at what our assumptions were at the beginning, and what the actual, you know, the actuality happened, for instance, the six percent increase in health insurance was a pretty big piece that came in at three-point-nine, so that two percent savings was quite a big shift from our projection. So those dollars could shift a little bit into salary or some other places. There are some other things similar to that that are worth looking into, dental health insurance, property insurance, liability, some fixed costs, we knew, transportation, food service, those kinds of things, we had a sense of what those increases would be, but some we were still projecting. Enrollment was another one. We didn't really know for sure what enrollment would do, and we still aren't sure until next year when we see the number of kids that walk through the doors. So this budget, I think it's a good point for me to make, is this budget is still preliminary. As we get to June, we'll pass a preliminary budget that'll allow us to start making expenditures to prepare for summer. We won't actually finalize the budget until we get more toward the end of summer with an actual certifying of the levy in October based on our third Friday count for enrollment. So a big influx of students coming in, we have more revenue, a big loss of students that were unanticipated, we have less revenue. It's on a three-year average, so it doesn't impact us significantly if we have a one-time spike either way, but over a three-year trend, we can kind of plan for that smoothing out and understand where our revenues or expenditures are going.
It looks good.
A balanced budget's always, always a healthy. Proven to some of the upcoming conversations, this budget that's balanced takes into consideration the math resource purchase that we just made. It takes into consideration capital improvements, which include the installation of the Viber project that has yet to be approved. It takes into consideration increasing police liaison coverage, which is something that could be coming in the future. I met with the city today, and more specifically, we'll know more about their position about supporting and partnering with that, but I did build in a budget for that. It does mean all of the teachers' requested needs for instructional materials and/or requests for professional development, so all of those are met as well. So not only is it balanced, but I think it's a strong budget as far as it allows us to continue to move forward as a district, but yet it's fiscally responsible, and we'll see actually some savings with, for instance, that Viber project over time.
Full-time employees, are we sitting at the same number or more in this budget?
Yeah, there's been no increases or decreases to overall FTE development, we remain flat for our staffing purposes.
And it reflects a two-point-seven percent raise from last month.
Certified staff, two-point change, I think, was seven, the support staff was less than that, one point. I never looked at, will we approve, that was a different rate increase.
Yeah, I like it too. Any questions? The question I got is, other down here in expenditures, what is that, a tail?
In the expenditure category, under other, the two oh six and one fifty-six, I'd like to look at how Marsha breaks that particular line item out and let you know. If I stare at it long enough, that number will jog my memory as something that, some of the expenditure category, I want to see if there's a revenue that matches that. Usually, that other revenue... Just not coming to me, I'm sorry. I will look at it.
Any other questions on the budget? So in June, you'll bring back a preliminary.
Yes, you'll have a preliminary line item budget of all the expenditures, and you can see percentage increase or decrease by a final budget.
And then the final budget has to be approved by October?
Typically, we do a final budget in July, it kind of locks down the expenditures for the year, but knowing that some of that will shift based on our actual students' third Friday count, and we finally certify the levy, but usually in July, we'll be giving the final budget approval. So you have a full month to review the budget, make suggestions or recommendations for any changes before we finalize in July.
Middle school Chromebooks?
This item was brought back up by Member Bush, and I talked with Member Stefis. We, there seemed to be maybe some confusion that we just wanted to clarify for the board. The board had pre-approved sixty Chromebooks at a prior meeting for the middle school. My request for one hundred Chromebooks may not have been clear in that it was forty additional above the sixty to make one hundred, and there seemed to be some confusion and clarification needed that it wasn't an additional one hundred that was being requested, it was forty. That amount translates to eleven thousand two hundred dollars. If there was the board's understanding all along, then this is an issue that can just move along. If there was confusion around what the request actually was, this is an opportunity to revisit it. So I didn't mean to bring it back to the agenda for a second straight time, but Member Bush and Member Stefis agreed that there needed to be clarification around intent.
I thought we changed it from what you asked for a hundred, did we approve sixty?
Just to be clear, why I brought it back, Matt asked last time if this was an additional hundred, and was told yes by about two members, which would mean twenty-eight thousand as opposed to eleven thousand two hundred. I think the additional request was a hundred and seventy-five, and shifted to two cards. My concern is, we are eleven thousand dollars away from one-to-one as opposed to cards which can be checked out, I believe, in thirties.
Yeah.
So it's not, if we're not one-to-one, we're not just forty short of that, because there's thirty going into a classroom. So we're maybe leaving two, three classrooms short when we are eleven thousand dollars away from one-to-one.
I thought, my recollection from two months ago was, there was a discussion about not having one-to-one in middle school, that there was concern with middle schoolers taking home Chromebooks. And so my recollection was that we intended to not go one-to-one, that it wasn't confusion or an accident, that that was the intention when we voted the way we did.
Okay, and I apologize if I brought it back incorrectly, but the apex discussion came up, and there was a request to bring back new numbers after you voted, and then I just wanted to make sure we were clear that that was not the number, that we are forty away, because there isn't, I don't think, a current intent, if we are one-to-one, for them to take them home.
I think that we also, when, that the having cards was the sort of the compromise position, and my recollection was that Vicki Dahl seemed satisfied with that as the middle ground.
She did, and she agreed that sixty was there, and she was there.
Yeah, you always ask for a lot more than we need, and then we hope we get two-thirds or half, but then we're happy. That's super nature, I'm not just talking about the school. Everybody looks at something from their own perspective.
So is it agreed that it's settled at sixty that wasn't to go home? Is that everybody's understanding?
I have a little problem with them going home, I don't know.
We don't anticipate them going home, we've heard the board on that matter, so the sixty was to stay. The request was then an additional forty would allow all kids, grade six through eight, to have the Chromebook. Again, not going home, it would be staying here locked up or in the evenings, but it would be accessible for six through eight. If the, if the answer is just sixty, that too would just stay here, we do not anticipate taking the sixth through the eighth grade home. That was supported by Technology Solutions, I had a conversation with our, I guess, liaison or support. Puri de Sheen saw a really high ratio of replacements, almost a one in eight for the middle school kids, they're just simply harder on, they don't take as well care in Puri de Sheen. Pointers are different, we would have a much better interpretation, but over in Sheen, that's the way they spoke.
Even if it was one-to-one and they're not taking them home, they're still lugging them around through classrooms, putting them in their lockers, I mean, they're still going to get a lot of wear and tear. And, I mean, this not only was decided two months ago, but it was on the agenda last month, so this is really the third bite at the apple, so.
Again, I didn't bring it forward, I want you to know.
I hear you.
Was there an official motion last month?
I believe, two months ago, last month, there was no action taken. And we can go to.
There was just clarification.
I don't know if there was an official motion taken, I mean, we were going to see how the budget panned out.
No. There was a motion, and then Apex came up, and the board requested Luke to bring back numbers. There was a motion and then Apex came up and the board requested Luke to bring back numbers after the motion.
That would be, so the minutes for the April eleventh would actually be in the main meeting, would it not?
It says no action taken.
I have a little bit of concern that if there's, the children are playing on something too much at the time now. I went to the concert down at the old theater. And the two children, one's probably, I guess about fifth grade and one younger, played on their games the whole time, they were sitting in front of me. I think people need to be able to take a pencil and paper and do something once in a while. In case the power grid goes out, we're going to be in pretty bad trouble.
Angie was going to get the minutes from two meetings ago, because I'm not sure. I wanted to just clarify what was or wasn't approved.
I'm pretty sure at last month's meeting, I pulled up the minutes and read back.
Two cards were approved two months ago.
Okay. So we have two cards at sixty, is that it? Okay, done.
Everybody ready to move on then? No more middle school Chromebooks for eight months. Policy committee report.
It's over, sorry.
Can we take five minutes?
Yeah.
I'm not in charge. Can we take five minutes? President Larry?
Playing with the computers all the time, hopefully does it, thinking about a million and a half years already, December, something like eighty.
All right, policy committee report.
The policy committee meeting was that a week ago?
Last Thursday.
Friday morning.
This policy is a, takes three existing policies that we had and merges them into one. The first paragraph talks about the general concept to purchase locally competitively, maximize the educational dollars to follow the law. The second paragraph is pretty much a reflection of what goes on. Any purchases right now that are under five hundred dollars get approved by the building principal and by Marsha. And if it's over five hundred, then there's the additional approval that goes to Luke. So this just documents what the actual practice is. This was not in our policy before. And then, let's see. All right, the third paragraph, this is new too. It basically says any spending over five thousand dollars has to be pre-approved by the board. As you all know, right now, that's not the case. So when we go through the monthly expenditures, if there's something over five thousand, half the time, more than half, it's sort of an exercise in futility because the money's already been spent. And then the fourth paragraph talks about, it's pretty much a definition of what is local purchasing. It's within the community, within the school district community. And fifth paragraph has to do with cooperative purchasing, that already was school policy. And then the last paragraph says you have to have competitive bids or quotes for anything over ten thousand and anything over a hundred thousand needs sealed bids. That will eliminate the whole, a couple of years ago when we had the transportation contract, there was a whole going back and forth, should we bid it, should we not bid it? It took a lot of time, this will answer the question, you bid. So this policy is just up there for a first read and it's not up for approval this month, but, so that's what it is.
At five thousand, that's either per month or what?
No, per item.
It'd be a lot of money in a month.
Well, I went back and looked and it really wouldn't have come up that often. And there are some things that we can exclude if we wanted to. For example, you know, alliance every month, that's more than five thousand. So it's coming from a single source.
Well, I would, you know, the bill like those and they're, you know, they should be exempted in some manner or another because that's a, that's a monthly operation and maintenance.
There's nothing that would prevent something like Alliance or the other things to be on the agenda, in the consent agenda, just as a broken down rating. It's just that, the order they've been doing, we would, it would be pre-approved or not. It gives us a chance to look at something and discuss it before it's purchased. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I have permission to address the board. Permission to address the board here.
Would this also, like, I work with the ESE application with Title I expenditures. That's grant dollars, is that something that you would, because there, I do recall there's one, but, you know, that would have meant that it would have exceeded by a thousand dollars, but it was grant dollars. Where does that fall in this continuum?
I think it would be hard to carve out a bunch of exceptions. Just because it's going to come to the board doesn't mean it's, the board's not going to approve it. But, you know, certainly on an agenda, if we have the items that are over five thousand, Luke could say, this is covered by a grant.
How does that grant money, that goes in and out of a different fund, doesn't it? Or is there a different fund for different grants?
It's earmarked towards just like kind of one expenditures, so yeah, there's pretty, that's pretty tight guidance on what you can and can't.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, would it be able to label like something so that it's accepted or not very easily or?
Yeah, that would be pretty easy, really.
So is that what you, I mean, you didn't mention that in the policy, but you just mentioned it to write sort of what the expectation would be monthly if there are, because it sounds like, I mean, there could be outside of what we're thinking, more things every month, like Alliance or some of the things I was thinking. So that our expectation is we're going to have two separate sort of, I mean, bringing it all, the five thousand dollar or more is in a separate kind of thing with some kind of description on each of them?
I, this policy does not spell out how Luke brings it forward. The board can tell him how they want it done or, you know, Luke, who is the, you know, purchasing agent, can come up with what he thinks would be the most expeditious way to handle it. This policy doesn't address how we're going to do that. It just says we are going to do it. It just seems to me, I mean, the more I was thinking about it is that probably having it on the consent agenda or something like that might be the easiest way to deal with it. And I think it would be up to Luke perhaps to determine how much information we now want. I mean, if it's the Alliance bill, I don't think you need to give much information. You know, if it's a seven thousand dollar table, you might want to talk about it.
Right. Yeah, is there any policy, is this like a first reading of this policy?
Yes.
Yeah, I know one time we approved the purchase of a van, thinking we were approving something like what we got now as smaller. We ended up with a top shelf Oldsmobile with leather seats and all available options.
Just last month?
No. When you were, when you were selling three-hundred vans.
Okay. All right. The hundred thousand dollar exemption there, does that, do you foresee any problems with that? I mean, I can understand your point. A three hundred thousand dollar transportation contract is nice and good to do.
Food service.
Food service, is that on a yearly, the food service we have now?
I believe they invoice us quarterly if I'm not mistaken.
But as far as the contract, you're.
Yep.
So every year we get that out?
This isn't a purchase, this is a bill for a monthly service and I would, that should be treated differently. I mean, we're not making this specifically for Luke, he happens to be the administrator now. You have to make it with a thought in mind of, you don't know who's going to be here five years, ten years from now, and try to anticipate so that you get the results you want regardless of who is doing it. It's, it's, it's not a reflection on Luke or anything or whatever, it's just, it's, it's the position.
I completely agree. I mean, that, that is what you do when you're drafting the policy.
Right, yeah.
I think though, and too, while we're reading this over the next month, we should be thinking about our expectation as a board and putting in expectations in place. Because I think that what Luke sees as transparent or enough information might be completely aligned with what we think we need and what we expect. And then we lay those guidelines out and then what, every time where he's outside of those or we have additional questions, then there's actual things that we can do to give whoever it is, Luke or whoever, clear understanding of what we expect and then what happens when that isn't, you know, then there's accountability with, with the information that we're getting. So that would be my suggestion while we're reading the policy, but to also be thinking about what our expectations should be, about the information we need for each of those items. Or to Glenn's point, if there's something a little bit different when it comes to like operational, ongoing operational costs versus purchases outside of that realm.
The ongoing operational cost is really handled in that last paragraph. I mean, that's not something that would come up on a monthly basis. That's just, that's more where it says there should be bids. But I, I hear what you're saying. I think the way it's been working for the most part anyway is when we exceed the monthly expenses for the bigger ticket items, somebody usually will say, what is that? And then we find out what it is. And then it's sort of pointless because it's already been purchased. This is just taking it, you know, moving it back a step, that's all.
Is everybody okay with the five thousand dollar figure?
That suits me.
I am too myself.
Yeah.
That's kind of the heart of the policy.
But not like dependable solutions, that's set every month, whatever it is.
Yeah, there's some recurring payments, transportation, food service, technology that are recurring. And it's, it's billed based on usage up to that, that quarter or that month. So there might be some iterations that, that come out of this that say those types of things are a standing agreement. And we want to amend the policy to reflect that specifically or just as a procedure of how we operate. I think we'll figure that out as we go.
Is that something that was an approved contract, Luke?
Yeah.
So something with a verbiage of, an approved contract is, I mean, it's already been brought to the board once.
And we can come up with language and try to amend it, put it in to address that. I mean, maybe that makes the most sense.
Because I think some of those numbers we don't know, like Alliance, we don't know until it's spent. Dependable solutions, we may not, PT we may not know until it's, you know.
Well, the food service and all that, the contract thing, the buses and whatever, so, you know, whatever it is, it is. I mean, that's, the only thing would be a lot, we don't, you don't have a, well, I don't, we haven't got a contract with them. When they put, put the service in, do you sign anything or not anymore?
Yeah, you sign a contract, but it's, you know, fee, you pay the.
Yeah, well, we got a contract signed, I mean, it's, you know.
Any comments on?
That's not a purchase item.
Yeah. I did check in the policy at community level, but.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to amend policy. You know, for example, we pre-approved the technology budget. We're not going to want to, you know, have a discussion every month about computers that are purchased under a budget that we already approved the computers for, so.
Amy? Asking for my opinion, I've shared this with the policy committee. This is the statement that I would personally prefer to see move in a different direction. The purchase of goods or services should be referred to the board for consideration and approval when the cost exceeds five thousand. That, that consideration and approval now becomes a board function or a board role and responsibility. And I think it shifts more toward the day-to-day operations and less toward governing at a level of policy that kind of monitors to make sure that you're fitting what it is that you're looking for. I would, I would much rather see, for instance, the district administrator shall see competitive bids for the purchase of goods and services in excess of five thousand dollars or two thousand dollars or even a thousand dollars. If we're making a thousand dollar purchase, whether it be a single item or collectively, it should be standard procedure that we have three competitive bids on that by the teachers that are making the purchase or the coaches that are making the purchase. Those types of things you can monitor for, hey, you're buying this, show me three bids that says that that's a competitive amount from that vendor or did you just go with your favorite friend that you always buy from? Those kinds of things I think monitor rather than work toward being in that role. I think this is just another level of inefficiency, but it's the board's prerogative and I work for the board and I want to make sure that you have the fiscal responsibility that you're looking for. And so the question was asked, you know, this is a place where I would see a little bit of a pushback or rub on my part. But I can live with the language as it is and I think we'll learn a lot from going through a cycle of this for a year and we can adjust it immediately.
You know, this doesn't mean that for items that are under ten thousand, you shouldn't get bids and quotes. The policy says that you should, right at the top, look for competitive prices and maximize, you know, the, the dollars that are spent. So I would hope that you continue to do what I know you're already doing, which is looking for the best price and getting competitive bids and quotes even when it's under ten thousand. But in the interest of us not micromanaging you, this makes it required that for anything over ten thousand, you have to. I, my concern was if we lowered that ten thousand amount, that would be onerous on you, don't you think?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
But given that burden, I would much have, have the burden of a lower threshold for competitive bids than the, the board considering an approving cost in excess of five thousand. So that would be my trade-off, but again, I can live with whichever direction the policy points towards.
In the past couple of months, Luke, the table is a sample, are there any other examples of meeting over five thousand?
I've shared with the board every purchase that's been over five thousand for the last month and a half since this discussion arrived. There are a few more purchases toward the end of the year, so we're spending down budgets starting to prepare for next year. So I think that's a little bit of anomaly right now. But no, I don't see anything that has, you know, caused pause or concern, but if there is, the board can certainly speak to it.
You have a part of it, I even listed once on email.
Right. Yep, that was everything to date since we started that conversation that you were part of about a little bit over a month ago.
The bills weren't coming to the board at this time.
Right, you see a lot of those expenditures in the board packet today that you approved with the bills payable. So you're already approving them on some levels. To Lisa's point, some of those expenditures are secured with a purchase order, but the actual check doesn't go out until the board approves them. So we have a requisition that says, or a purchase order that's generated that says the money is there, let's start the purchasing process. We need formal board approval to release those, that money to pay for the actual good and service. And I think to the policy committee's point, they would rather have that be a preapproval. Logistically, I suggested that potentially we have some standing meetings. The second is our regular meeting. The fourth is a potential standing meeting for finance committee. If there's any five thousand or overs, we meet as needed. That way we're not waiting a full month to potentially make a purchase and/or find out that there's more questions and it delays it for another month. So we'll see, we'll see how many of those raise to the level of even needing a meeting because of the timeliness and/or those that need that kind of screening.
Yeah, because none of these checks get sent until tomorrow.
Through your budget process, if you have a line item in there of possible purchases of, again, the table, for example, could be in there. And then we can see it and then through, as the year goes through, we, you was bringing before purchases. I think it could work.
In the budget, would it say table or would it say district furniture, furniture replacement? And it would have some number, right?
Yeah, in the budget, you would see it at even a higher level than that. You would see, for instance, a five fifty-one or five sixty-one object, which would be replacement equipment or new equipment at the district level versus replacement or new equipment at the high school level. There's a budget for that, let's just say it's ten thousand. When the expenditure is made, it's debited against that account to make sure it doesn't go over that line item budget. And then the board would approve, he says, yes, you're within the budget and you did have competitive bids and, and, and. So the only piece that's, that's changing is that. So the only piece that's, that's changing is that, you know, we would expense it to a budget still, but the board would work with the person that's making the purchase and, and ask the questions that are needed to ask to, to verify that it's a, a needed purchase. My, my feeling is probably twenty-four of twenty-five purchases are going to go without question because most of what we purchase is, um, right within the budget and for purposes that, uh, are sound. So that's why I can say we're putting in a policy that I think is overly reaching for a very small, um, issue in, in the overall scheme of things.
I, I don't disagree with what you said about, um, twenty-four or twenty-five would be approved.
Another example is the Livermore Technologies. The first fee we paid to them to do the work, I mean, if you would have brought that to us and we was, we'd see, uh, the payback on that. Makes sense. And we'd all be, we'd all have more information upfront then, instead of calling you at the seventh hour before the meeting saying, what's this about?
Yeah, my hesitation with that though is that we, we might not be calling Luke, but if we're working directly with teachers or administration to understand what the purchase is, we are sort of cutting out his role in it. So that, I mean, and I know that I've been assured that that's not going to happen and that's not the point of this policy, but I, I can see Luke's point where if, if we're working directly with anyone other than Luke, we might be, um, gaining efficiencies on how we communicate with him, but I'm not sure that we would be, um, I think we'd be less efficient when it comes to the other staff. So it's sort of a trade-off.
Well, every time you go through another person, you, you lose something in the translation. I mean, not, you know, cut Luke off, but if I wanted to know something about, uh, say something involving, some Rogers involved in, I, you know, I would like to talk to Roger to see what, you know, rather than Luke, I have to go ask Roger and then talk to me because, you know, I've seen this over a very long period of time. You don't always completely replicate what you hear. And I'm, I'm not, that's, again, that's nothing to do with personality. Is that just human nature?
I mean, I think, I just feel like the only difference is, is that this is actually like something we hired Luke to do. So I, I am all about, um, you know, being responsible with our money. I am. To me, it's about accountability. What I don't see in this policy at all is if Luke is spending money that we don't feel like is in line with what we want to be doing at a, at a high level from a strategic kind of plan of where our district should be going, then it's less about us making the approvals. And to me, it should be about, we need to figure out what we don't like about how he's spending and then solve the problem, which is if Luke is not making the right choices for the board, then the problem isn't necessarily the choices he's making. It's maybe that he's not aligned with what we're doing. So to me, it, it's just a little bit deeper than that. Um, I think that, you know, I don't know. I mean, the level of trust is, is part of that. And so if this helps the board feel like they can, they can trust the information that's given, maybe we'll get to that level. But, um, to me, it sort of seems like we're taking some of Luke's job and we're making those decisions. And I've, I mean, the policy committee knows this too. I've expressed this with them, so it's not expecting any reaction.
For thirty days and then vote. Otherwise, we'd dwell on that for another hour now. I mean, we're not getting anywhere with our conversations much, but.
Out of curiosity, I apologize if we're not getting anywhere. The credit card that we have, we accumulate points. Are those able to be turned into dollars?
They are, yeah. They're redeemed at, I wouldn't say regular intervals, but at certain intervals where they're enough to kind of cause over.
Are their limits at a point where they are the highest we can get?
Uh, the limits on the cards are actually reduced so that it wouldn't be used for inappropriate expenditures. If they're wearing the wrong cans, we'd be, I'm the only one that has a ten thousand dollar limit. Everybody else has either twenty.
Just curious with items like a line that you can go online and pay. That's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of points. Oh, you can't do that with a line anymore?
No, because they charge a two or three cents.
They do, okay.
A percent of them charge a two.
Darn it.
Good idea. You know, there are popular opportunities to do a bill.
Some opportunities to build up.
Thank you.
Well, the problem is with credit cards, some instances, I'm not saying this alone, but people tend to spend eighteen percent more of the credit card than with the cash.
All right, we're gonna bring that back in a month.
Yep.
For the second, uh, the school safety.
Uh, there was a couple, uh, Laddie and Glenn, where Bill for sure, who went.
I just wanted to go, Bill would run the.
Bill and Glenn. And I know Bill's not here. I can share some anecdotal information he shared, but Glenn, I'd be interested to know your, your reaction or.
Well, they worked. They had one that was a pistol, like if you were in this room, might be effective to a certain extent. They didn't fire any live ones only outside and the guy, and he said he could, he had a mask on. And, uh, I suppose one he would wear if he was SWAT team and they shot him in the chest, he had a, he had a, uh, bulletproof vest on and everything. And they, uh, I was rather amazed at the, at the accuracy with the rifle one. I don't know how far it was. Bill estimated it now, maybe seventy feet, maybe the sixty feet, I don't know. But they were shooting at a tree and they did hit it and it was fairly fast, but, uh, if you wanted me to go out in that hall or somebody out there with a gun, tell them I'm killing somebody or whatever, I want another, I want a gun. I don't want one of those. Like in this room, maybe we'd capacitate him a little bit. I, I don't know. But, uh, I've been doing a little looking around and there's actually, uh, oh, a fellow named, ASA Hutchinson. I don't know if it's Aza, Aza, how would, how you pronounce it. But this gentleman was a former U.S. prosecutor, head of the federal drug enforcement, Assistant Secretary of Homeland Security. And he's now the standing governor of Arkansas. And he, uh, worked this up right after the Newtown shooting. It's a two hundred and twenty-five page report, which I didn't really want to copy the whole report off. But, uh, it includes psychiatric evaluations and assessments in the school. The arming of willing participants and with forty to six hours of training. And they have to be as proficient as a regular police officer. They have to pass the same test. And that's two probably bigger things, but it's, uh, and it's some things about bullying in there, but it's a, it's, it's a very comprehensive. It's called, uh, did I mention the name of it?
No.
ASA is all right.
Oh, National School Shield.
What was it?
National School Shield. To me, it sounds like, you know, it's pretty comprehensive. A little bit better than this or that or the other thing. It's kind of a combination of, of everything. And it's stated like that you need people right there at the spot because the earliest intervention is the, is the best. And, uh, like the psychiatric stuff and, uh, that, uh, to help identify somebody who might be, you know, in that mode or whatever, so. Because that, that was ignored that, uh, the one at Newtown, he had problems and authorities knew it. And the one in Colorado, if I recall correctly, when I read about that, it's been some time that he has also identified. Yeah, he was, I just, uh, he was getting psychiatric help at this college he was attending. And they had notified authorities of his, his, uh, oh, what'd you call him? He, he was stating that he wanted to kill people or something to that effect. There was, wasn't exactly that words, but that's, that's what it was. He was, he had the thoughts of, of actually killing other people. Nobody did anything about it. So it's, it's not just, you know. Most of the time it's, you know, somebody from the school, you know. Sometime down the future, we may have foreign radicals here, but I don't think we're going to have any in the near future. But I think that would be the best way to, is to get that, you know. And go through that rather than just say we're going to do this or that or the other thing. That's evidently been a lot more time and money spent on that and the resources checked and whatever than what we would be able to do.
Would the board like me to look into the National School Shield and, and report back?
Sounds good. Could you also, maybe you have already looked into the safety of promise programs?
Sure.
They have. I think I shared that with you guys.
Yeah. Can I kind of bring back?
Carla Rand was, I think so. It was too, I think it was too late for this year when we shared it, but yeah.
For next year, they say something and.
Just going back to that, uh, intruder defense, uh, system, Glenn. Was there a problem with one of the guns?
Well, not really. One of them jammed, but, uh, the other thing, his son was kind of nervous about it. You have to, those balls are in a, like a little box in there and you have to shake it occasionally so that they don't lodge. And somebody shot it and didn't shake it. Well, then one didn't come out and one come out and went about twenty feet. I mean, that wasn't, you know, any big deal. I guess someone was instructed. I'm just, the effectiveness is what, you know, I.
And it's pepper spray, right?
Yeah. And like when it was outside, the wind was blowing pretty well. I was, I was amazed at what did it hit the target. They looked about like, uh, oh, they were a ball about like, you know, golf ball, a little bigger maybe. I was amazed that they were as accurate, if they were, especially with the little wind out there. But you had to adjust for the wind a little bit. You can see the wind gathering, but it probably seventy feet, you could, you could hit your target. You know, maybe inside, maybe a little further than that. I don't know.
I love the concept, Glenn. To interfere with, uh, with the perpetrator's thoughts or will or whatever, get him off target as fast as possible.
Well, the person's got to go to wherever that's located at. Then you got to get the thing open. You have to have a, uh, a key or a chip or something to get it open. So it depends on how far you are away from that and how far the perpetrator is away. Or if he's between you and that, then, then what do you do?
Yeah, I'm not saying it's perfect, but it would, as a parent, it'd give me comfort to know that we had, uh, we had some type of protection in the building.
If, if we determine or, or the board determines, um, at some point that we don't want to arm a secondary person beyond Bill, would this be a suitable secondary to officer that way? If you were in the office and.
Well, I'll tell you what, I wouldn't trust my grandchildren's life with it. I've got a forty-five ACP that works a lot better.
And, and that's not my question. I'm just curious if that's the option right in front of us.
Yeah.
How do you feel about it at that point?
Uh, I wouldn't be comfortable with it.
I think school safety is, um, seems like it's on, on the front burner every, every year. And.
Well, the chance is one in a million you're going to have someone killed by a perpetrator in the school. So you can just do nothing and your chances are pretty good. You're going to spend thousands and thousands of dollars and nothing ever happens and, you know, something does, who.
Without building a wall around the school, putting a mold up, you can't. Bob, you have?
I got a couple of questions about what our present policy is now. I mean, how many days a week does, you have a place to use on come here, right?
Three days per week.
Three out of the five? Okay, and, and has it been talked about him coming every day?
Yeah.
And what do, what do the statistics show as far as, um, as far as, I mean, to my knowledge, keep, kind of halfway keeping track of all those coward shooting people, they've been in what they call a gun-free zone. I don't know that they all, has anybody, does anybody know the statistic on that with the.
Yeah, they've all been in the gun-free zone.
Okay.
Nobody's ever attacked.
There, there is no such thing as a gun-free zone. If, if a perpetrator wants to bring a gun into, I mean, that little sign you got out here on the door with the circle around a gun, they don't give a damn if there's a, if this is a gun-free zone. Nobody cares. I mean, for a perpetrator or a sick mind, a couple of things I would say is, um, I think if you have an armed person in this school, even if it's one person, I think it's way less likely that somebody's come here. Because they're, I think they're, they're sick for one thing and they're cowards for another. Okay? But with, with that being said, what, what is the policy here? I, I was involved in a situation in this school district several years ago where a kid made a threat, a threatening statement to me about another kid in this school. And I came, this was before Luke, this was a long time ago. And I came to the school and reported it to an official here at school. And the comment was, well, it didn't happen on the school grounds. I can't do nothing about it. Well, I mean, I was pretty dang frustrated that I brought this information and it was just like, well, we didn't hear it said here on the school ground. And it was, it was, it was life threatening is what it was. So what is the present policy right now if someone, you know, because Glenn, I think, made the comment about how some of these instances that happened, it was brought to, to the attention of authorities that some person had a mental. I mean, if you make, if you're trying to kill somebody, I mean, you got a little, I don't mean in a fit of anger, you say, I want to kill you. But I mean, if someone makes a statement, they're going to do bodily harm to somebody, I mean, they got a little bit of a mental issue.
Why does protocol loop for that?
We would certainly investigate the matter, substantiate it, and, uh, we would work with local law enforcement, uh, county social workers to make sure that the, the safety of the children are, are, are first priority and that also the mental health is addressed. If there's some other issues, um, you know, whether they be suicidal or other, uh, certainly are things that we would, we would work closely with our local governmental agencies. So there is, uh, you're right, a gray area when you look at things that happen outside in the community versus inside of our school walls and where our authority starts and stops. But to that end, we, we're a partner, just like if something happens in school, we're working with law enforcement agency outside of the school to try to get a resolution to it and it works both ways.
Yeah, so, but what, what, I mean, what, what encourages a, a citizen to even come tell you if you're, if, if the, if the feedback is, well, it didn't happen inside of the school, so. I mean, I mean, that's, you know, we've seen that if you're watching things on a national, it's happening. If you've got cable TV, it's, we got a twenty-four hour news cycle. And, you know, there's been terrorist attacks where neighbors saw suspicious things and they didn't report it because they didn't want to be, uh, well, in that, in that case, I guess they called them Islamophobes. They didn't want to, where was that, San Bernardino? They didn't want to report suspicious activity. In my case, I, I did come and report, it wasn't suspicious activity, it was something that got said to me. And it kind of goes along with what Glenn said is if, well, it didn't get said here in this room or it didn't get said once they walked inside it. I mean, that's a little confusing to me.
You think, you think you'd get the same response today if that happened now?
I, you mean here?
Anywhere.
I don't know.
I don't know how long.
That's why I'm asking the question. What our policy is, I don't know. I don't understand.
I hope, I hope you won.
I don't know.
But so I, I guess I'm, I'm confused on, um, if you, if you hear something like that outside. I mean, if I heard something like that, like at a, like at a, I don't know, somewhere that is not school-related and I felt like it was, or at the school and I felt like it was a, a threat where I, you know, had paused because I thought, oh my gosh, that's real. I mean, my first thought would not be to go to the school with it. It would be go to authorities, right? I mean, so I guess I just want to make sure what our policy is in that because I don't think that we want to become sort of like a clearinghouse for, I mean, I mean, I don't, I, to your point. I don't think it's going to happen often.
I'll be a little more specific. It was a threat to come, come in the school and kill a student.
Okay, that's, that, that's what I wanted to clarify.
I would come to the school and that's what I did.
Yeah.
And it was like, well, it didn't happen here, so there's nothing we can do about it. Well, I mean, this person I had presented to, him and I had words about that. I said, well, the blood's on your hands if anything, but he didn't do nothing about it.
Yeah, that, I appreciate you clarifying because I was just confused that you meant like just any threat.
I hope you get somebody's attention, Bob.
Yeah.
On that.
Well, I mean, and, and you make a good point. Larry, I don't know, Julie, I don't know. This is a different time than it was. I mean, this was several years ago. We are living in a different time.
Yes.
And I don't think if you have someone armed in this school, be it a teacher that's willing, I mean, how do you feel about that? Do you feel, do you feel it'd be all right if a teacher was willing to be armed, that it's okay or?
We've had like, I mean, I feel like.
You can answer.
I mean, you don't want to say.
Answer? I would rather not answer. I mean, I feel like I can't always speak for all the teachers. I do think that there are some things as far as safety that would make us all feel safer. I don't know that I deliberately say what those things are, but I think I'm glad that people are addressing safety in general.
And not only as a teacher, but as a parent, yeah.
Well, absolutely. That's what I, I mean, when they walk inside the school, like I said, but that, that little circle. said, that, that little circle around a gun that says "No gun," that's a joke.
When you say safety's on the front burner, what, what is happening with regard to safety?
Certainly part of this discussion is leading up or following up with some of the concerns about how would we respond to an intruder in the building. It seems like that's been investigated, it's not something that we want to continue to pursue, the intruder defense system. This morning I talked with the city police chief about expanding our police liaison coverage and partnering with the city to get a better presence, looking at moving from three days a week to four days a week, most likely covering Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Fridays are a high-volume day for both of us. Wednesdays doesn't seem to be a good use of getting a full day of service because we'll have kids in the buildings until a partial day. So that's been, been happening. You know, beyond that, that's, that's really where it stopped and we haven't really gone further than that right now.
Did you mention the building entrances?
Thank you. Certainly we're working with Nexus, they have a plan for each one of the high school and elementary buildings so that all visitors would have to come through a locked entrance in order to gain access to the school. So you'll see that most likely in June as part of a revision to our building and facilities, which I know was something that was a priority for the board, they asked us to put that on the front burner, which is, I agree, has been done. We started with working with the original architect of this building, but then encapsulated underneath the entire facility study. So we've got a plan that will be forthcoming for both buildings to secure the entrances further than they already are.
And then it also sounds like there's the...
The Sandy Hook Promise has...
What is the Sandy Hook Promise?
It is a program that was implemented following the Sandy Hook shooting about what they've learned and it basically starts to making sure that every student has somebody that they can contact and talk to if they hear a credible threat and then a response system for interacting with that threat.
And it's educating the student body?
Correct, correct. And that's certainly in our queue.
For next year.
For next year, yeah.
Have you got any costs like for altering the...
Not yet, but we will have those for next month is the goal, is to have some line item costs about what that would take to retrofit both entrances.
Well, the concern I have with doing that and the secretary can look out in and see if there's anybody in there. I've seen human nature where after a while we're going to look out, but are we going to get over and look down to see if somebody's crawling on their hands and knees with a gun on the person that's being let in? Probably not. So I think you would be just as well off to have whatever it takes to be sufficient cameras where you've got them right now, which is going to cost you two or three hundred bucks so you can see the whole area out there.
They can see the area pretty good, I came in here two different times and they knew who I was when I needed to be there to bring something for Lauren that she forgot. So, and I, I mean, I asked them why they just don't lock the door naked. They knew who I was before they were like, "Yeah, I think they're doing a good job that way." When you mentioned about the police liaison coming in the four days, why would you have to specify every week which four days he comes?
Yeah, couldn't we leave it as a surprise? I mean, it seems like...
Yeah, certainly. I just threw that out to throw off intruders.
Good thing it's...
It really wasn't the plan.
That is why, that is why you have the people with the concealed carry permits, because nobody knows who they are, they don't know where they're at. They know where Bill's at, they can see who he is, you know?
Whatever brought it up the first place to get one, you weren't here, were you?
To get one what?
The police liaison up here.
I think that was, I don't, I think the first piece, if I, I may be wrong, but I think I brought, I did bring that partnership in with the city. One of the things that I recall of kind of upon arriving here was that there was just no presence at any time with regards to police liaison. And I approached the city about a partnership where we share the costs of salary and employee to get a part-time person in to assist with having a presence, a squad car up front, somebody that could help us with investigations, this was pre-cameras at the time, and to chase down some of those eventually truant students and help them get to school. So that was probably five years ago, it was probably an early initiative.
It was one of those.
Has it been longer than that? Maybe it's the funding source that should...
I think it was funding shift. Yeah, I think it was away from just like a truancy perspective and more of a safety perspective. Right? I mean, initially it was only kind of a liaison, right?
Originally it was a whole time position and then the money got tight and that cut way back and then like...
We found a different way to partner and source the dollars. So I stand corrected, I have my great idea.
Well, most of the, I guess, negative to having an officer to school.
So to answer your question, Lisa, we are working on, we are working on the entrances, whether that's a go or not will be decided. Police liaison.
Increasing that time.
You have that budget already.
Yes, and location as well, we do the police liaison more front and center, I will be part of that renovation.
So that's two main safety enhancements. And is there anything else?
Well, we're educating, I mean, the staff has been engaged with that Sandy Hook thing, educate this.
And I would also...
And we're still considering it.
There is a review of the cameras and looking at where we have the next set of obvious dead spots. I would agree that we have a pretty good coverage, but there are some areas that we just would, would benefit from having a better presence and an eye out there, both as a deterrent and to actually capture some of the activities happening outside as well as inside the building. So that will be part of the June renovation as well.
What if the building and grounds and finance committee was expanded to include safety? Just in its title, is, to demonstrate that safety is a priority and it is on the front burner?
Have it at a role ready to be done. So finance, operations, safety. Sounds good, sounds nice actually.
Well, you can have a roofed camera.
Sounds like operations and policy as well, I mean, really, right? I mean...
Safe operation.
I feel like safety is part of, hopefully, every one of our things, but if it makes you feel better, Lisa, go by it.
We're going to two schools out of eighteen buildings, huh? In our area.
Well, I remember when we were talking to Dodgeville years ago and he said, "We don't have anything to do with Dodgeville because they have a police officer up there two or three times a week." And that was one of our bragging points here because we didn't have to have a police officer in school.
Luke, what do you think, what were Bill's thoughts?
So Bill was not, he understood like Glenn that, you know, sometimes things jam and it's not always the best situation for when you're trying to showcase how things work. But his opinion was that it would be better to buy what I would consider a pepper spray grenade, for lack of a better term, something that you can pull the pin and roll down the hallway that would create a corridor then that would be filled with smoke that would not allow a person to penetrate down that hallway, thereby creating accesses for people to get out and so forth. He thought that that would be much easier to reach out and toss something down a hallway than it would be to try to position yourself to aim and fire a paintball-like pepper spray gun.
It would soon seem to be fairly cheaper also.
Yeah, it would be much cheaper for the, for the cost and...
Would he have that on him too, so it's not something where he has to run back to a location?
That'd be a good point that we didn't really talk about. We did talk a little bit about the, you can purchase a Kevlar shield, like you see the police with the little window that goes through them that if you were in kind of a riot gear, those can be purchased relatively inexpensively. It creates a bulletproof barrier that kids could use to shield them across the hallway. Those kinds of things, Kevlar jackets, might be wise to have on hand, that he would probably purchase à la carte off to the side rather than buying a package.
Can we possibly find out if those are something staff can be trained on? The pepper spray grenades, that we may be able to place them in multiple spots.
Out of reach of the children?
Yeah, I mean, even, in a safe location. But just so the one guy in the school with the gun is not the one guy in the school with the pepper spray.
Yeah, that's true.
No, it says right in that report that he's, what's it called, Doug? The best deterrent is to have armed people with concealed carry permits on your school, nobody knows who they are, nobody knows where they're at. You want to do that, you can spend all the money you want, it's still not going to have the, have the response time you want to get to.
And we may get there someday, Glenn, but that's going to take a whole lot more than just this board deciding to go that route.
How much is it going to cost you to change all the entrances?
We should have those numbers next month.
Intruder defense, so we, where are we standing on that? Are we interested in that at all?
I was hearing no.
Part of, part of the safety, fine.
Yeah, I'm interested, I don't need to waste my time looking into it.
Items for action, approval of open enrollment request?
We have before the board a request for seventeen students to open enroll in. These would be new students to the district, and then we have a request for eleven students to open enroll out. We do have to act on these requests prior to the, the end of June, so it is important that the board take action on whether they will or will not approve the students in and out from the districts as, as shared. We've also reviewed these for which ones are in need of special education or not and which ones we'd be able to accommodate. We've also predefined grade levels that we would or wouldn't take kids in based on class sizes. We have made an exception when it was a sibling to a student that would be accepted open enrollment, so we would allow the entire family to, to be able to reside or open enroll in or out. So again, seventeen students that are coming in, eleven students that are coming out with some notes before the board and recommend approval.
And these are new?
These are new in addition to the sixty-one and forty-six other.
I move you through.
This is a plus six, Luke?
This would be a plus, yes.
I'm watching a second. So this...
Let's see, we got one with special needs. Moving to Dodgeville, but just, you know, open enrollment in, it says.
No, they're already here, but they're moving to Dodgeville, so they need to open enroll into our district.
Right, that's why, uh... Why do we want to enroll, open enroll someone with special needs?
They're currently going to school right now.
Yeah, but they're moving to Dodgeville.
Well, we are a public school and, you know, it's a benefit that you get being a citizen and a resident to get, I mean, why wouldn't we? I mean, of course we would.
Why wouldn't you? I mean, some of the taxpayers in Middle Point District don't want to pay for special needs students from Dodgeville, and they have a school there.
Is this student moving to Dodgeville?
Yeah, it's moving to Dodgeville to stay in Middle Point School.
So they're in our district?
Luke, we get six thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars per student that's open enrolled in.
Do we get any transfer in exemption as well for special needs?
Uh, no, no additional dollars.
And, and we have, when there's a situation where it would overtax our special ed staff, then, under those circumstances, and we've already decided which grades we can't take any more special ed kids for open enrollment purposes. But I assume this person, this grade, that child is not, you know, in one of those grades, so, so we can totally accommodate them.
Yes, as we currently are right now.
And it doesn't require any additional hiring or anything like that.
No.
So I stand by my motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? No. Larry and Glenn opposed? Motion carried?
Well, I would apparently not want to stay there.
They want to stay here, but they're moving to Dodgeville.
Yeah, they're moving.
Well, there's a number of reasons that you might have to move. Affordability of, maybe they lost their housing and found housing in Dodgeville.
Do we have to transport the child in?
No, not open enrollment, we don't transport kids in.
No.
Even special needs kids?
No.
Unless, okay, unless you're in the district.
We'd transport them from the nearest location that we would naturally have them pick up, so they'd be responsible for bringing them to the district border where we're already running a bus, and at that point we'd pick the kid up and bring him in. So fully disclosing, yes, we would transport, but only from our borders, we're not crossing borders to pick up on the side.
Approval of vendor to bringing dark fiber to Menorah School?
We have gone through a request for proposals for a fiber construction. We've also compared that with what's called lit fiber versus dark fiber. Dark fiber is the direct line that comes into the building from the highway, that would come underneath the highway, up the hill and into the building. We would then have the opportunity to get up to ten gigabytes of data available into our building. Right now we're at one hundred meg, so that's a significant upgrade. And there is a build-out to that project that does cost, and we have three vendors that have submitted a big comparison for your review. The lowest bid of those is Holker, and we have worked with Holker to pull fiber with inside the building from the main closet to the closet switches. So they are a vendor that we're familiar with, they are also working in this area, and I believe that's mainly why their low bid is they have already equipment in this area that they can deploy right to this project. The project is an eighty-five thousand dollar project. We apply for E-rate funding as a federal subsidizing of schools based on your poverty rate, so we would be getting a kickback from the federal government in what's called priority two funding. That is a dollar amount that's out there for schools for pulling broadband into the school district. If we compare that to the cost it would take to bring lit fiber or, for instance, a charter service into the building, that would be an annual fee of nine thousand, six hundred to transport from the internet service provider, which is WISNET, to the school, right now it's ninety-six hundred dollars annually. So if we were to amateurize this out over five years, the project would pay for itself and we would have a much broader expansion of bandwidth. There is the possibility to share this bandwidth with local entities, I've been working with Farmer Savings Bank, they have an interest in potentially paying for some of the strands of fiber to come into our building and then they could utilize those strands, so we're still exploring that. But there is some time sensitivity to this, this is an extensive project, and E-rate does require that we close out and request a vendor for this year's funding cycle by, I believe it's May twenty-sixth. So we would want to get an approval for this project to go forward or not. We're not under any obligation at this point, the work has been done for the proposal, will serve us well for years to come. But it is something that I've been able to build a budget around and I do think it's a fiscally wise decision to go forward with the dark fiber as well as it will increase our bandwidth capacity for our district. So I would recommend approval and I would answer any questions that you have.
Since you've interrupted with five years, what's the life of the actual fiber?
Forever. Yep.
Going along.
And I guess everything's never forever, but, you know, like a telephone line or a fiber underneath a ground cable.
If we talk to our current on-call vendor, they're perfectly professional, working with dark fiber as opposed to...
Yes.
...we currently, so that vendor that we use for switch issues would have no problem.
No problem, right. The vault itself, it's outside of the highway, they actually own like Packerland, so we would be working with that vendor to bring it up through to the building and Dependable Solutions would help us with the actual install to connect to the existing infrastructure and then we essentially have a pretty robust product for our school district for years to come. It's a one-time purchase.
Basically, it runs along the highway and then comes down to us?
Yeah, it's coming from Dodgeville down to Platteville along the highway buried underneath and whether it was by...
Four lane?
Yes, yes. So whether it was by, by strategic, if Packerland said, "Hey, there's a school here, we better put a vault here," but there's only so many of these connection points along the path, there happens to be one just at the bottom of the hill across the highway, so the first challenge would be to dig underneath all four lanes of the highway. And then they've got to route that back up through the hill, and then there was a couple proposals, one was to saw cut back to the building and one was to actually auger back to the building, and the auger is the better of the two.
So it comes to us here, how will farmers get it to them?
So they would actually then purchase, they would pay to bring, there's usually twenty-four strand or twelve strand fiber, they would pay the up charge to bring the additional twelve strands up to the building, and then they would, like we would, lease, let's just say charter's the carrier, there's multiple, could be Frontier or others, to get it from this building to their building. Like we have to get it from this building to the elementary building. So we're still going to pay charter to get us from point A here with a, with ten gig over to the elementary, and the downpipe would still be limited to whatever we pay for, so it's probably going to be a hundred meg to the elementary. Over time, the next phase of this could be to try to work with the city, if they're laying new roads to put in conduit, whether it be above ground or below ground, so you can go through the wires or underneath or a combination of both to try to get a fiber path from here to the elementary would be the long-term goal, but this is the first step in that project and probably the easier of the two projects. I mean, obviously, streets are going to be dark so often, but over time we could maybe lay the conduit to do something down the road. to, to do something down the road.
Possibly any other grants you got to apply for for this, it seems like it's in the news all the time.
Yeah, not, not specifically for this particular project that I'm aware of. Um, E-rate is, is probably the only one that's going to come into, to play here. There are certainly some rural school initiatives that are out there to bring broadband, but that's more to areas that don't have sufficient broadband and trying to get lines out to rural areas more than it is to try to bring a line into someplace that has existing fiber.
So if we bring that in from our line, that's schools line, we don't pay a fee for?
Nope.
It's just the, the service fee and whatever.
We are actually trenching in and laying a, a physical fiber cable between the highway and here that we would go and operate.
The eighty-five thousand, did that?
Pardon?
The eighty-five thousand, yes.
Yes, yeah. From the vault down to highway.
We ever, we have no worry about anybody ever cutting that?
If they did, it's there.
Yeah, as, as with anything, you know, there's always that danger in cutting fiber.
Will that be under, um, Harlan's Digger hotline, for example?
For sure, yeah, yeah.
Do you have it in the budget?
Yes, yeah, that's built into next year's budget.
They have to pay extra for that though. Digger won't allow for private owned cable, I don't think, for us.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I don't think Digger will locate that private cable on.
No, they don't do anything private, they don't.
Unless somebody's building a house on the hillside, we should be okay.
Is it our prop, it's coming up our property?
It is coming up our property, yeah.
To the highway.
Yeah, there's the easement on the highway that we don't own, but after that it comes right through the hillside.
So just to clarify, are, are we paying ninety-six hundred a year now?
Only to get it from WISNET to the high school.
Okay.
There's more that's.
So there's no, actually no savings? For what we're currently buying?
Um, so that fee, that ninety-six hundred would go away, we would no longer pay that.
And we are, we're paying, okay, we're paying that now.
Yeah, we're paying that now.
I'll make a watch out for her. Hold on a second. Do, do you have this figured in our budget?
I do, yep. This is part of the budget for next year.
Next year's budget.
Yes.
Will there be additional costs once they get that line to our building?
With twenty-five hundred dollars, but that's in there as well.
It's in there too, and so this is turnkey operation.
Yep.
Except the elementary, it won't cover the elementary.
No, it'll stop at the high school, we'll still have to have a transport like charter or frontier to get from the high school to the elementary.
Wireless.
Um, it would be either above ground, below ground or a combination of, they get to choose how it gets from point B to point C, depending on the event that we select. Ultimately, we'd like to, to vary a line, but we're not there yet, this would be just one of that two base projects.
And do we need that much capability in our school?
We are, um, growing every year and so the question is right now, do we need ten gig? No. Um, are we pushing a hundred meg up to two hundred meg? Yes. Uh, when we're starting to infuse more video, more telepresence, more one-to-one, we're starting to amp up more, but this is really a, a much longer term project than I would say even a, a decade. You know, as we continue to grow and things become more robust, uh, around the internet, we will be ready to grow into that.
Any other discussion?
Passy?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dolphin?
Yeah.
Hey?
Yes.
Kench?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Stephis?
Yes. Motion carried. Uh, we're down to super tenants.
I'll try to be brief, the vacancy updates. Um, I just wanted to share that for the elementary transport position, we had fifty-six applicants. Uh, we closed up the, the ability to apply Friday of last week, that was open for two full weeks. With fifty-six applicants, the selection committee met today, it's a cross-representation of teachers, educational specialists and parents, administrators as well. Uh, we have selected six candidates to interview. Those six candidates will be phoned tomorrow morning and set those interviews up for a week from tonight. So a week from Monday, we will start that process of actually selecting a potential candidate replacement. And then we hope to bring in a special meeting to the board on the twenty-third an applicant for your approval, so I would like to request we have a special board meeting specifically for that purpose, uh, to make sure that an applicant is brought forward timely and we can approve and secure that person as there's a lot of vacancies that are popping up this time of year. So if you can check the calendar, let me know on the twenty-third. Um, also on the special education, uh, front, we do have a posting to be placed on Barren's, it's a, it's a grade six to twelve cross-categorical position and to date we have seven applicants and you may leave that open, we haven't started the selection process for that yet. One of the updates on vacancies.
On a typical application for a principal in an elementary school, is the fifty-five, fifty-six, whatever the number is, is that normal or everybody's wanting to?
I would say it, it seems to be high, uh, for the hired two years ago when we hired Mr. Brogley, there were thirty-nine applicants. So that gives you kind of a litmus test of where we were two years ago for this part of the southwest Wisconsin in a position in the same district. But, um, certainly seems to be, uh, a large amount of candidates that are teachers that are new to the administration profession, that are looking for their first opportunity. Um, the, the amount of candidates that have actual experience as an administrator would be the minority of candidates. You know, we've, we've taken a selection, a cross-selection of both types of candidates, so we're really looking for qualifications that meet the, the summary of the surveys that were given out to elementary staff and parents and we use that to, to try to match up their skills, talents, attributes with some of the look fours that came out in that survey.
Is the special ed teacher similar?
Um, the special education teacher, we have not done a survey for look fours, if that's.
I mean, the number of applicants.
The number of applicants. Um, that would be pretty standard and, um, I, if I were to look at all seven, I'm not sure all seven would be licensed certified candidates, but I know that there are some good quality candidates and I do feel comfortable finding a, a good fit.
How many candidates do we have?
I want to say less than a half dozen, but I would have to look.
So then I felt like seven was probably pretty good for special ed.
Probably was, we're usually down on it. Like five to seven came in the first week and it's just kind of flat, so if not, any, anybody can come in today.
I had a request, uh, from eight board members, a book study after closed session. Do we want to do a school board photo before closed session or after?
We do it after, if we have time, we'll do it after. We do it before.
Remember last year we looked like zombies in the paper, it was awesome.
That was only you.
No, it was. I remember you when I looked crazy down.
Certainly, right, I like to be skewed.
Dude, I know.
Is that directions? Yeah.
We need to have a picture with Stephanie, it's Andy.
Headshot you.
It's team photo.
Or you want to stand at this time?
All of us standing or? Yeah.
Joel, Joel, do you want to shut this down?
If you want to.
Okay.
Hi.
You can, we're going to close session after this, people.
Do you want them all standing?
Um, I know it's more slimming to stand, so if we have, but.
I'll stand then.
So Lisa's probably going to be in the front row, you have to kind of denote here though. So Glenn, you're in the back, you're a, you're a taller.
I don't care, look in the back.
Back with class. Jeff might be more in the front.
No, I don't think so. That was last time.
Should I do this? Are we sending her to one?
We need one more in the front, it's not going to be Andy, it, it needs to be Jeff. Jeff or Larry.
Larry has a taller than I am.
It's got to be Jeff or Larry.
I'm the one, the two people behind you.
He'll be the thorn between the two roses.
Oh, come on.
Okay, all right, now, um, Larry, Stephis, woman, yeah, huddle.
Huddle up.
Okay, all right, this looks semi.
Did you take?
Yeah, that was, that was, that was so true. Julie knows my language, okay, one, two, three. Five, six, seven, eight.
And you're only going to take the top half of it?
That's good, yep, that's what I did.
All right.
See, not as bad as we all thought. Oh, you can't even tell. No, you can, not like.
That's nice. She's going to take us another two hours to tell.
I need to say I.
Yeah, I'm sort of like. I want a tight show.
Terrible.
Did we shut that off? No, we didn't shut that off. So that was a long.
So we got a motion to move an open session by Julie, sent by Jeff, all in favor, say aye. Photo, a motion carried. Uh, motion to reflect Luke's performance evaluation? Is that what you want Luke to?
Uh, sure, I think, you know, it's a, it's a budgetary item, so you're making a recommendation for salary increase.
Rated defective with a one percent salary increase. We have motion to support that.
Yeah.
Hold on a second, Luke.
Can we already do that, or should I?
We're being closed, we're not.
Oh, this doesn't matter.
Nobody was watching.
So a motion by Julie, sent by Larry, to reflect the one percent, uh, salary increase for the sixteen, seventeen school year? Roll call?